Tonight, we will have a two-part forum. First, from 6:00 PM until 7:00 PM, we will hear from the candidates running for Seward County Community College trustees. Then, beginning at 7:00 PM, the USD 480 candidates will share their views on the district. I will be tonight's moderator for the Seward County Community College portion of tonight's forum. Tonight, we have four candidates running for three open positions for the college trustees. They are Kay Bertsloff, Casey Mian, Dustin Ormiston, and Brett Reese. Tonight's forum is brought to you by the Liberal Chamber of Commerce, KSCB 1270 AM Radio, the Leader in Times and Law Mexicana Radio. We welcome our listening audience tonight and want to thank Seward County Broadcasting for airing this forum on KSCB 1270 AM. The Leader in Times is also live streaming this event at LiberalFirst.com, and it will be available to view on the Liberal Chamber, the Law Mexicana, and the Leader in Times Facebook pages. We invite our listening audience to submit questions for either portion of this forum by calling 624-3855, or by emailing info@liberalkschamber.com. Cut-off for submitting questions for this portion of the forum will be 7:00 PM, the USD 480 portion by 8:00 PM. We welcome those of you who have joined us in our audience here at the depot. Anyone present may submit written questions for our candidates. Just ask one of our legislative committee members for a note card and turn in your question to Rozelle by 8:00 PM. There will be no oral questions. Due to time constraints, there may be questions we don't have time to ask. Duplicate questions and personal attack questions will be eliminated. We ask those in our audience to turn off your cellphones for the courtesy of our candidates, remain quiet, and hold any applause until the end of the forum. Candidates, we ask that you please place your cellphones on the table by your nameplates. I also want to remind our candidates to use the microphone when you're speaking so the audience listening can hear you. The following is a list of our forum rules. Each candidate has two minutes for opening remarks, one minute for to answer each question, and 30 seconds for any additional comments. You will also have two minutes for closing. Ada Linehan-Brocker is our timekeeper, and she will signal you when your time is about up and when you should stop. So keep an eye on Ada while you're speaking. Each candidate will answer each question first on a rotating basis, and we will now begin with opening remarks. Each of you will have two minutes, and we will begin with Casey.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody. I want to thank the chamber for hosting us. This is always a fantastic event to get to learn, to know our, get to know our candidates and a little bit about them, a little bit about myself. I am a high school graduate of Liberal High School. Essentially, moved away to play golf in community college. So I actually attended Dodge City. So I'm a graduate of Dodge City Community College, and then furthered my education up at Kansas State. When I was at Kansas State, I promised, you know, answering my dad if I was ever coming back to Liberal, I was like, no way. It was about February of 95. I was gonna say, never going back. Moved back in May of 95, and I've been back here ever since. It's absolutely the best choice, long run, that I've ever made in my life, outside of marrying my wife and everything. And so, I've been on the board for, since 2017. So I really enjoy being on our board. It is something that I believe that what it adds to our community, adds to this portion of the state, not only Kansas, but also into the Panhandles. We have a very large exposure, and what I want to say is helping people further their lives, essentially. It's amazing to see some of that. All three of my kids have gone through the community college, have taken, one way or another, been involved with Seward County, and gone through the community county line. So I'm a big believer in this, and I hopefully that you will find yourself to reelect me.
Thank you. Kay?
I'm Kay Bertsloff again. I want to thank everyone for hosting this. I actually come from a higher education background. Prior to moving to Liberal, 25 years ago, because I married a local boy, I was actually working at the University of Kansas School of Medicine in Wichita. I had previously worked at University of Kansas Lawrence. I'd also worked at Northern State University and Cotty College. When I moved here, I actually became the Director of the United Way, where I served for 14 and a half years. And I also am one of the founders and the President of the Liberal Area Coalition for Families. So pretty much, my whole life has been dedicated to public service and also to higher education. After moving here, I actually had the opportunity to become an adjunct speech instructor at the college, and I was able to do that up until the time that I was elected to the board back in 2018. So I've really enjoyed my time here. I relate well to our students because, like them, I was a first-generation college student. My parents weren't able to go to college, and so I really understand where our students are coming from when you don't have that parental support in knowing how to navigate a college system. I think we do a very good job of that here, kind of making sure that our students have that kind of extra support. But I certainly relate well to our students because I understand what they go through on a daily basis. And again, I also had the privilege of teaching our students and really enjoyed being an adjunct speech instructor. I enjoyed the four years that I served on the board, and I'll be candid, I'd like to get back on the board. I think there's a lot of value to having somebody that has a higher education background, who has also worked in the classroom and worked in administration.
Thank you. Brett?
Yeah, my name is Brett Reese. I live north of Kismett, just on the eastern edge of Seward County. I farm with my family and my wife, Sarah. She's with our oldest daughter, that's a sophomore. Playing volleyball in Syracuse tonight. So it's a very busy time of the year for us with harvest and all the kids' activities. But thank you for the chamber and the community for coming out to listen to the candidate forum. I'm excited about Seward County. I've spent my whole life in Seward County, other than three and a half years when I attended K-State, where I met my wife. Like I said, I farm north of Kismett with my family, wife Sarah, and I've got three daughters, Caitlin, Addison, and Leah. And, you know, I'm passionate about education. My wife teaches math at Southwestern Heights, and I'm just really passionate about education. We have a saying, "My wife and I, never not working." So we're always dedicated to our community. There's three things that are pillars in my life, my faith, community, and serving others. And so constantly, whether it's coaching, or volunteering, or being on nonprofits, I just like working together as a team, coming together to find solutions to problems that we may face. And our Seward County Community College has got strong leadership right now, and it's set itself up for success. And I'm just eager to take part in that and represent your voice for our community, for our college, and for our future.
Thank you. Dustin?
I'm Dustin Ormiston. Again, I would like to thank the chamber for hosting this event. I moved to Liberal in 95 from college. I've been a CPA at Hay Rice and Associates for nearly, a little over 30 years, of which I'm a partner now. Met my wife in Liberal. We raised our daughter in Liberal. We've always been involved in the Liberal community in a lot of different aspects, and one of the larger aspects of that has been through Seward County Community College. We've supported a lot of the athletic programs. We've hosted kids from other countries in our home. We've hosted kids on dinners and ways to get away from the campus at different times. And since 2008, I've been on the board, helping to support the opportunities that are provided by this college. To me, for our community, that's the biggest thing that we do as a college, is we provide opportunity. A lot of our local members, a lot of these opportunities that are provided, are not available if we don't provide them. So for somebody to leave home, that may or may not be an opportunity, financially or just family-wise. So the more that we can do to provide those high-quality experiences, to get quality jobs, to support our families and our community, it's extremely important. And that's why I got on the board, and that's why I continue to serve. So I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. So our first question of the night, we'll go to, we'll start with Kay. What is the role of a Seward County Community College trustee?
I think the role, first and foremost, is to support the president. That's one of the things, when we were looking for a president, we were looking for someone who had that vision. And I think one of the things you need to do as a trustee is to work with the president on that vision. I also think it's very important to support the faculty, staff, and students. I think you need to be in touch with what's happening in all of those aspects of the college. I certainly tried to go to as many events as possible, just so that I would have not only a good feel for what was happening on campus, but also so that people had access to me. So that if they wanted to talk to a board or trustee member, they knew all they had to do was come up and I was available to them, and I think that's important.
What do you feel the role of a Seward County Community College trustee is?
Yeah, I feel like the role of the trustees is to support the president and help lay out the strategic vision of the college, develop that vision, and help the president and guide him in implementing that vision. I think that the current board has done a fantastic job. The Seward County is a wonderful place to, wonderful place to get an education. But I think there's, we can all bring something different from our walks of lives to this board, to guide and shape our community for the future. So the other thing, the other side of that is being fiduciary responsibility. You know, we are taking care of taxpayer dollars, and we need to keep that in mind.
So the responsibility primarily is to support the college. I mean, that's why everybody gets on. Kind of going off what Brett said, each person brings on different skill sets. So my personal skill set is 30 years of public accounting and municipal auditing experience. So my role has historically been on there, is more on the money side. The education side, I mean, I've attended college, I've done a limited amount of adjunct teaching in accounting. So my life experience in that role may not be as strong as some of the administration and some of those that are on there. So for me personally, that is my goal, is to provide that accounting background and to support the president in his decisions.
Yeah, the role definitely of a trustee is to help the president, help the staff and everybody out there, make the community college as successful as possible. And the success comes from watching the graduates that attend classes, attend programs, watching them grow, go out into their communities, if it's locally or wherever it may be, to watch them, you know, expand and help, and help our community, really. We've several times sat looking for solutions, being a sounding board for ideas that the president or part of the executive team want to present. There's times where we definitely, you know, are on board 100%, and then there's times where we all, we have an alternative opinion, just to give ideas on how different perspective to look at things. So that helps with, that's our role.
Any additional comments? Okay. Our next question, we'll start with Brett. What areas of growth would you like to see in old programs, or what new additional programs would you like to see?
I mean, from my ag background, obviously, I would like to bring some more ag viewpoints, I guess, to the board and to the college. They've expanded their ag program, but mainly through the animal science part of the ag division. I think there's a huge possibility, huge growth potential for agriculture, whether it's drones, technology that's coming into ag. I think I can provide that background and maybe help our ag department grow and take it to the next level. There's all sorts of opportunity. Currently, it's hard for farmers to find skilled employees. A lot of farmers are using H2A employees that come over with skills. And so I think Seward County can help bridge that gap and create a lot of possibilities in the agricultural field.
So currently, we're working on the ag program. CDL is one of the big demands. We've got a lot of federal and state grants to help support that as a needed job opportunity for our region. HVAC continues to be another program that we're trying to expand. So diesel tech, we purchased the old Walmart building to help facilitate in having space for those programs. One of my big keys is, is I want to provide opportunity for people to have a job that's a living wage. Some of these type of areas are those areas that do provide that. So that, whenever we're looking at expanding programs, that's what kind of drives my forces, is what's going to provide that opportunity.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, essentially, there are several programs that we continue to explore, either on the expansion side or maybe introduction here. Because what we have to do is look at what kind of our area, you know, where we live, what can, what can help people out here? Because if it is, if it is ag, if it's, if there's definitely a shortage in HVAC, you look at, you look at all the things that people talk about nowadays on skilled, on a skilled setting that needs to be filled. There's a lot of people that are leaving or retiring from the workforce that we have to replace. That is where a community college comes in, to help replace and educate those people, to get them to the position where they can backfill and then expand on those programs.
I think all of those are very good answers, but one of the things that I think we also need to focus in on is, of course, our healthcare. That's a huge need, it will continue to be a huge need. We have an excellent nursing program. We've been able to add other programs in, you know, such as respiratory therapy, such as being a phlebotomist and that type of thing. But I think one of the things we need to really look at is not only what we can do as far as the shorter-term programs, so that we can get people qualified to be that assistant that's needed, to be that person in the hospitals. So I think we can do some more development in our healthcare program. And then it's been really exciting to see what's happened in the ag program. When I started on the board, the ag program was basically dead. We had some people that really came in and have done a tremendous job, so I would like to see the continued focus on the ag program. And also, there's more, more work that could be done as far as expanding the automotive trades.
Any additional comments? Easy group tonight. All right. Starting with Dustin. What do you believe is the biggest challenge facing Seward County Community College?
I think one of the biggest challenges facing all of our public entities is finance. So basically, Seward County Community College gets their financing in three pools, from the state, from the county, as far as a tax levy, and from the students paying tuition. Whenever I first gone on, that was kind of a third, third, third. Now, through attrition with the state, state's probably about 20% now. So whenever you take that much of a decrease, and the other two pots are filling the hole, that becomes increasingly difficult. You know, so basically, finance would be my overall.
Casey?
Yes, absolutely. I concur completely with Dustin. It's, 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 it's very interesting how it's, you know, essentially being on the board for the last eight and some odd months. It's changed significantly just in that amount of time. It's, you know, because you're, we're all feeling the pressure of what it takes to, you know, take care of, take care of the community, take care of the taxpayer. Those are, those are things that we have to be sensitive to as a board, to make certain that we're providing programs that can, that can help everything out here. But it does come, it does come at a cost. We have to balance those two between. So it is that, it is that balance between that, figuring out how we're going to expand, but also keep it within, keep it within budget.
I come from a slightly different perspective, in the sense that I, of course, write a lot of grants, manage grants, and so I know that we are taking a huge hit on campus on grants. The grants are not available, they are cutting the funding, and that is having an impact on the programs on campus. And so one of the things that I think we're going to have to do is be creative and looking at maybe some alternative funders, because a lot of the things that we've been able to do, whether it's expansion of the CDL program, whether it's our adult education, has been grant-funded. And so I think when you suddenly lose that pot of money, you're watching some of the programs that really sustain our students, really sustain our work, kind of go away. And so we're going to have to get creative on how to handle that loss.
Yeah, when I looked at the budget of the college, kind of, I'm just going to round numbers, but it looked like a third was coming from property tax, and then another pool of about a third was the state and federal taxes, tax dollars. Forty-seven percent of the student body is from Seward County, so we have 53% of the student body coming in from outside of Seward County. You know, so it does put a burden on Seward County that we're educating kids from outside the county. I mean, really, Liberal is a central hub. So I think we need to strongly advocate that our state and federal funding stays strong and advocate for our representatives to keep funding Seward County at a high level, because we're opening up doors of opportunity for many kids out here. So I would strongly advocate for additional state and federal funding.
Any additional? Okay. So back over to Casey. Do you think that Seward County Community College can maintain its current rate of growth? If so, through what avenues could that growth occur, and what problems could be a result?
Well, our trajectory right now has been, we're at or very near all-time enrollment hours, right? Our enrollment runs about 1,850 students right now. Now, essentially, that's, that's maybe down just slightly, but our hours are right, still right up there. Some of our growth is going to come from, you know, maybe from an expansion of programs, that's one. We've looked at, you know, our Saints Ahead program, which runs, which is a program that has been started in recent years, runs about 1,200 students through it per year. And so that is something that is, that expansion is helping us to basically get ingrained with some, get in, basically let them know who we are, and possibly then they come back to us and finish up certain degrees or certificates.
I think there's always different areas you can look at for expansion. I think one of the things that really helped our enrollment was adding soccer into our athletic program. That was something that I advocated for, but it also helped bring more people onto campus. People that were moving away to be able to participate in soccer stayed here. I think the idea of the shorter-term kind of degree programs, where like Dustin says, you prepare people to basically have a job, whether it's a six-month program. I think the Saints Ahead's program was probably one of the smartest things we did for that concurrent enrollment of kids in high school and college, so that you made it affordable for them. So I think we've seen a lot of progress, but I think, again, you can also look at what are some other things that we can do to kind of keep that enrollment balanced.
Okay. To you, Brett?
Yeah, part of that growth has been from adding soccer, part of it's been from the Saints Ahead and bringing kids in from Huguenin, Southwestern Heights, Sablet. That's a great opportunity for our kids to get ahead. There's been really big growth on online participation and enrollment, and I think that's a great way to, you know, to provide more education. It takes less brick and mortar, fewer assets required to do that, and you're able to touch more lives and impact more people. So I think there needs to be a bigger emphasis on online learning. You know, it's not the way I grew up. COVID changed a lot of things, but I think there's a huge opportunity for some of that more additional growth.
To you, Dustin?
So this is really probably more than a 60-second answer, but so in the last several years, we've averaged like 30% growth. This last year, we're about flat, down 3%. Our challenge going forward is, through all that growth, we had a lot of unused capacity. Well, with that growth, we're kind of getting close to capacity. So we're at a kind of a crossroads now. If we have substantial growth on campus, we don't have enough dorm space, we don't have enough teachers. So where we go into that funding model, like I explained earlier, third, 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 well, if only two of those are going up a third, we're short. So that's one of the challenges that we got going forward with a lot of extra growth, is we don't necessarily have the capacity at this point to, to service it.
Any additional comments? So starting with Kay. What are your thoughts of four-year colleges expanding into the community college arena with programs?
I think that that's actually one of the areas where we can expand. I think partnerships with four-year institutions, where people can stay in the community, go to Seward County Community College, but through, say, Newman University, K-State, KU, they would be able to stay here and get their four-year degree. And I think that's something that we've, we've And I think that's something that we've been exploring. I think there is more room for expansion on that. As far as them setting up their own satellites here, not in favor of that. I want them to work through the community college. I think that's where we can offer the support that the students need, even though they're going to a four-year kind of, but they're staying here, we're still going to have to provide that support to them. So I want them to come in, but I want them to partner with Seward County.
Very good. Brett?
Yeah, one thing all community colleges need to do is make sure that their curriculum aligns with four-year colleges. That was one of the biggest fears that I had as a senior when I graduated high school is, oh no, are all these courses, I just took 18 credit hours my senior year and part of my junior year, are these courses going to transfer, you know? So that's a big fear. We have to make sure our curriculum aligns with those four-year programs, and, you know, I'm all about partnerships and collaboration, but we also have to make sure that we're looking out for Seward County Community College and our community. But I think there's a great potential with online learning to collaborate with those schools, and I think that's something Seward County needs to do with high schools, is further those partnerships with our local high schools. There's a huge shortage of teachers, you know, if we can supply a little bit of proctoring or online courses to create some college education opportunities in our schools, in our high schools, would be a great opportunity.
Dustin?
I feel the same synergies need to be with the community college, working with the We already have several of those programs over the years that have been in place. We have, K-State has a two-plus-two. Newman, we've currently been working on agreements with them. Fort Hays, over the years, we've had different agreements with them. But I think having it run through Seward County Community College provides that base home for the support for those students to succeed. The education we provide are concurrent high school students. I mean, my daughter graduated with 20 hours, she's graduating her bachelor's degree a year early. Those type of programs, even though they're not necessarily four-year degrees, are providing that savings to our students and providing them opportunities going forward.
Casey?
I think partnership is always effective if it's done the right way. The concern about, the concern that I have to some extent with some of those schools, and there are other community colleges out in our part of the world that have already struck some of these alliances, but at the same time, they've been by headline really so far only. I mean, essentially, the program has yet to really get taken off in those areas, so it has to be done the right way, because you can't just say, hey, I've got a program, but then if you don't follow through with it, that's where the concern comes. So you have to, it's more than just saying, hey, we've got this alliance with them. It's got to be an alliance that has steps in place and procedures in place to make certain it can be successful.
Okay. So, I got lost there on who I'm going with, I'm going to Brett next, yeah. Do you see Seward County Community College offering four-year degree programs?
Yeah, I see us working in partnership with some four-year programs. Like Dustin alluded to, there's been rapid growth, and I don't know that we have the infrastructure to support four-year programs with that many students, you know, basically doubles your campus, doubles the size of your student body. So not sure that we have the infrastructure to do that currently, but I'm in favor of creating these partnerships. The one thing that I like about the four-year partnership is, you know, we want to keep people here. We want to grow our community. So instead of sending our children off to these bigger universities, we have an opportunity that we could keep them here for two years, the two-plus-two, keep them here for all four years, so that they will come back and stay in our community and be contributing citizens.
Dustin?
I agree. To me, the biggest opportunity is working with the four-year institutions on that transition to getting those last two years of education. Some of the agreements that are in place or have been in place, somebody can get a degree and basically have very little to, no presence on that campus through the classes that they're able to take on Seward County Community College's campus and the online opportunities at the university level. A lot of that is already in place, so I would be more in favor of expanding on that than basically recreating, to me, a problem that's not there.
Casey?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it's the expansion of the programs, it's vetting it out. You know, it's just like, you know, the education, you know, to get your education degree through Kansas Newman, that's a program that we've been working on, trying to get it up off the ground. That's what we have to do. That's essentially, you know, where we have to go. And the college is providing a lot of resources that essentially, the old ed you can, we all remember that terminology, that belongs to Seward County now. Seward County Community College owns that platform, and that's our blend flex, and that allows us to be able to give classes, get classes for students that might not be able to have a professor here in Liberal, but they have access to that class, one way or another, through online courses.
Kay?
I don't think turning Seward County Community College into a four-year institution would serve its students or its taxpayers any good. I think, just like everybody's alluded to, the most efficient way, the most effective way for us to be able to provide that four-year degree to people staying in our community is by doing it through partnerships. And I think the goal of a community college is to be not only that four-year degree, but certainly focus in on that two-year degree, certainly focus in on that vocational technical school. And so I think we're headed in absolutely the direction we need to be, which is providing that four-year degree, but providing it through a partnership.
I'll add to it, you know, we do live in a service economy, and there are several high, high, high-paying jobs out here in our community that are possible with a two-year degree, whether it's VOTech or nursing programs. So, you know, I think that we just need to emphasize what our community needs, what are the wants and needs of our community, and stick to those.
Thank you, Brett. Anybody else? All right. Starting with Dustin. Our current administration is allocating $900 billion to technical schools. How do you think this will affect our technical school?
Well, we're actively, as a community, as a college, investing in our technical schools, so, I mean, it's beneficial for additional funding, but that's kind of the direction that we're going in regardless, because that's where the opportunities are for the people that we serve. The CDL program provides an opportunity to get a life skill that is valuable to the market. HVAC provides that life skill that's, you know, valuable to the market. So whenever we're going into those decisions on where we're allocating funds and trying to expand programs and those type of things, you know, programs in those areas, and in like nursing, that's where we're allocating our dollars. So the more we can get of that funding, the better.
Casey?
So the question is, how's the $900 billion? How do we see that positively coming towards us, basically? Okay. It's providing the support to our leadership to go after it. I mean, it is one of those things, we're all competing for it. We're not the only school that knows it's out there, so we have to have the type of leadership in place. President Bennett has been a fantastic leader of our institution. I couldn't imagine anybody better suited for that position to go after that. It is a long process, though, because it is going after petitioning, getting to know people, you know, and saying, hey, this is what we can provide in our part of the world. Bring that program out here, fund our program, and allows us to expand, to put, for example, truck drivers onto the road, which we all know we need.
Kay?
I think, just like everybody else has emphasized, it's not going to get handed to you. It's one of those things where you are going to have to aggressively go after it, and I think President Bennett recognizes that. I think, like our state representative, I know Shannon has been, you know, very active trying on things on the state and local level. Senator Moran has certainly been an advocate for Seward County Community College, we appreciate that. One of the things that I think is, one of those unknown assets that they have is Charity Herenick is an amazing grant writer. Obviously, I work with Charity quite a bit, but if you don't have that background, if you don't have those people aggressively pursuing it, they're not going to hand it to you. And so it's going to be one of those things where we're really going to have to work hard to get that money.
Brett?
Yeah, I think Seward County needs to be proud of its historical record of job placement of kids that go through our vocational technical institute. I mean, a proven track record that shows high job placement will surely bring value to those tax dollars. So I think we just need to advocate for ourselves that we're doing a wonderful job at Seward County, and we want to do a better job, continue improving on these VOTech skills to set us apart. You know, let the track record speak for itself. Kids that come through Seward County go to work, have jobs and have opportunity.
I'd just add real quick that the CDL expansion was funded substantially by federal grand dollars.
Very good. Going back to Casey. What solutions are you in favor of to solve the pool situation?
Very, very interesting question right there. You know, it's a very, and I understand, it's a very, that pool, well, we're coming up on our, what, our 60th anniversary here before too long. 1967, you know, the school was built. The pool dates back about nearly that long. So essentially, you know, we're at a position right now that we've got to find a solution, because the solution is not to keep throwing good money, you know, and I'll be the first one to say, I own a pool, a pool is a hole to throw money into, and that's really what it kind of comes down to. Essentially, what we've got to do is work with the community to try to find out a best solution. A community this size deserves a pool, but it has to be done the right way that can encompass a lot of needs, that encumbers all of our needs in the community here.
Kay?
The current pool, as we all know, is problematic. It has a lot of health issues, and I have always been baffled by why it wasn't built to Olympic standards, so that you could actually have meats and everything there. So I think one of the things that, as we move forward on it, and I know we've been meeting, I say we, I know the college has been meeting with the city, meeting with the USD 480. It's one of those things, it's going to have to be a combined project, but, and I would really like to see us have an indoor pool again, but a pool that is of regulation standards so that we can have our piranhas have their meat there, we can have competitive meats, we can add, you know, right now, we don't really have a swimming program at the college, that would be a way that we could expand if we had a viable pool. So it's just going to have to be one of those things where we have to come together and figure out a solution, but it's not just going to be the college, it's got to be all three entities.
Yeah, the pool, it's either you love it, or you could care less. But I think it's unfair for that burden to be put on Seward County, using Seward County Community College tax dollars. The thing is used by many in the community, with the swim teams, even swim team from out of state. So, you know, I think it has to be a collaboration with the city, with the county, with the college, you know, and possibly some grants, but there's a huge need. I think it was very clear that the city wants a pool, an indoor pool. So I'm in favor of it, but we just have to understand that it's tax dollars, we have to make sure that we do it right, that we set ourselves up, you know, don't do just the pool. What else comes along with the pool? It's staffing, is it recovery pools, is it, you know, the rehab pools, you know, just want to make sure that we do it right when we do it, so that in five years, 10 years, we don't look at, why didn't we do this size? You know, we've just got to have a community come together to have a say in it.
Dustin?
That's kind of where we're at. So over the last several years, we've recognized that the amount of money that we're putting into the pool and the bandies that we're putting on the pool are not sustainable, that a solution needs to be found. As a college, in our mission, as a board, we didn't know that we had the financial capacity to take that on alone. So we tried to sound the alarm to some extent, so that there can be community involvement in trying to find the solution between all the taxing entities, and that's in the process of what we're doing now. We're just praying that the pool will last until we can get a solution, because it really is in not-good shape.
Okay. To Kay. Would you advocate for adding more sports programs?
When we have the capacity to handle them. Like I said, I was a huge advocate for soccer. From the moment I came on the board, I was asking, why didn't we have a soccer program? Because I know how big it is in our community. And we've just recently added, you know, women's wrestling, but there's also the capacity, or hopefully, down the road, we're one of the few institutions that doesn't have a cross-country team. So we've got some opportunities there, but as Dustin alluded to, one of the issues you're going to have is athletes typically stay on campus. So we're going to have to look at not only adding sports programs, but what is going to be our capacity to house those athletes? And so we're probably going to have to look at, you know, how can we add on to our dorm situation, how can we modify that? But as far as, if there's a demand, I think we need to look at it.
Brett?
Yeah, I'd be in favor of adding some sports teams, but, you know, back to the ag program, I feel like the ag program really grew because we offered livestock judging scholarships that brought people in. You know, we can add sports teams to bring more kids in, but really, I want kids, I want kids that want to come to Seward County because it's a great education, not because I get a scholarship to go run cross-country or play softball. I want them to want to come to Seward County because it's a premier place to get an education.
Dustin?
So we've added several programs over the last several years. Like I'd said earlier, we kind of had unused capacity. Now we're kind of at capacity, or maybe a little over capacity at certain times. We've had to put three students to a room in the dorms at certain times. So am I in favor, it would depend on the situation in which we would add it. We're kind of at a crossroads in whether we're going to build additional dorm space and hire new teachers and create more capacity to educate and provide those opportunities. So it's something that'll have to be studied.
Casey?
I honestly don't think there's anything that we wouldn't consider if it makes sense. Kay made a good point, cross-country. But once you start expanding, and we are at that point, we're at about 250 students in the dorms right now. If we were to triple up everybody, we'd get to about 305. And so now we're talking about three kids per room, that gets a little crowded. And so, but if you go beyond that, if you bring in a cross-country, now you're talking about 20, 30, 40, 50 kids, we're going to have to have the dorm. But when you bring in more students, you also have to bring in more faculty. So it is, it's thinking beyond just saying, hey, we want those programs to expand, we have to figure out a way to provide the best education we can.
Seeing how capacity in the dorms was a pretty constant theme across those answers, do you think expanding the dorm capacity should be a priority in the near future? Starting with Brett.
Yeah, I think it needs to be a priority. I mean, it's obvious we're at capacity, moving three, and I think there's a demand for students to have individual dorms, and I think there can be tier pricing to that, where if you want to live in, that's the way it is at universities, you want to live in a nice new dorm, it's this much. If you want to live with one roommate, it's this, and if you want three roommates, it's this. You can do tier pricing with that and offer some housing at a premium, but I think it is a priority. You know, it's also, are we getting the cart ahead of the horse? Are, you know, do we have the faculty, do we have the staff, do we have the manpower to educate more? But we also, obviously, you have to have a place for students to live first, you know, we can't just have more students and no place to live.
Dustin?
So I would kind of go with that. So the question on additional dorm space or capacity there, it's a bigger question than that, because if we provide that, then we don't have the capacity for the other education components of that. One of the things- One of the things that I always kind of work back and forth is, over the years, I've heard numerous, numerous kids talk about how special of an experience they had at Seward County Community College. They go to the four-year university and it's like, how do I get back to Seward County? That was an unbelievable experience. So, through expansion or any of those type of things, I want to make sure that we don't lose that special experience that these kids get when they attend here.
Casey?
Yeah, I mean, it's, expansion is what we want to do if we can, if it makes sense, right? It's a big leap to go from what we have right now to all of a sudden, we all know what it costs to put a building up. It's not inexpensive, we'll put it that way. So, it is a big leap and it's a trust to the community college to say, hey, we're going to do it right. So, I am for it, okay? I am for it, but just as long as we do it in a way that it's measured and we know that we've got the plans in place that are going to come along with that. Because I do, I don't, I don't want to put out a lesser, I don't want to say product, but it is kind of a product we're putting out to have students come to us that they're getting a quality education. That's what we want. They need to be quality education so that when they go back out in the workforce, they can go right into the job and everybody knows it's on-the-job training, but they want the background first.
Very good. Kay?
I think Dustin made a very good point in that it's one thing to expand your dorms, but you also have to make sure that you are providing a quality experience to those people living in those dorms. So, it's got to be something where the expansion is maybe scalable. It's kind of like, can you do it in shifts? Can you do it in, like, we add some more and then we add some more? So, you're going to have to really kind of, I think, plan out your expansion to make sure that not only do you have the capacity to room those individuals, but you're providing not only the education, but the support services. I think one of the things that the community college did very well was take the old dorm and make that into student support services so that now we can offer health on campus. We can offer mental health on campus. They can actually have a place where they can hang out and go cook their own meals. So, you not only are looking at, you know, what are we doing as far as housing them, but are we making sure they're having a good experience, that they're having that capacity?
Very good. So, starting with Dustin, which do you think is a better avenue for funding the community colleges? The funding model of a third local, third federal, third state, or just a statewide sales tax?
I only get a minute?
We do allow for additional.
So, to me, that is a very, very complicated question. So, in our current funding model, it allows us as a community to provide the education and the opportunities that we want for our community, for our kids. If you go to a state sales tax model, from a tax payer's standpoint, that probably is very beneficial, but from a control, local control and local opportunity, it could be problematic.
Very good. Casey?
Honestly, I have similar reservations about a statewide sales tax because my worry would be that it starts off with all in good purposes in mind, that's a, there are bigger education, well, the universities out there. The worry would be that a small institution like ours might get neglected. We are way out in the western part of the state. You know, we have direct lines, we don't all ride horses around out here. Essentially, it's a matter of figuring out how we're going to fund everything. It can be complicated because we all know that, you know, with everything that goes on with taxes, we're all sensitive to that. So, if we can figure out a model, it's always changing. That's one thing about it. It is always changing and we have to adapt to it, to what's best for the college.
Kay?
Well, sales taxes are inherently regressive, so you're going to be hitting the people of lower income much harder than you are people of higher income. I mean, that's just how sales taxes work, but I think the bigger question has been outlined very well that what happens to the control? Who decides who gets the money? And we are, we're going to be up against KU, K-State. They've got a lot more people, they've got a lot more lobbyists and everything else. So, I think going to a statewide sales tax would not serve our community. It might serve some other communities, but I think we would lose a lot of local control and I'm afraid we would lose a lot of funding.
Brett?
Yeah, my fear with that is giving up the control where the state starts mandating what we teach, how we teach, when really, we're a community, we know what our community needs. The state sometimes is so disconnected from us being on the western side with Topeka being east there, they're so disconnected with what we need. You know, we need oil and gas, we need nursing, we need HVAC, we need, you know, ag programs, we need collision and auto repair. We know what we need and so, I think we're best served, we're, 47% of our student body is from Seward County and so, I think we want to control how those kids are receiving an education. We know our demographics, we know our student body. I think we want to be in charge of setting the course for how their education takes place.
Dustin?
Just to add, so a solution that I'd be more to advocate for is there's 105 counties, there's 19 counties that have community colleges. If the counties that did not have a community college had a sales tax to support the ones that did, that would make it a different discussion.
Anyone else?
I think that's fair because, you know, we're educating kids from Meade County, Haskell County, that those taxpayers aren't directly contributing to Seward County. So, I think a model like that could work out, but the control would be the biggest hurdle.
Starting with Casey, what do you think the most advantageous way for Seward County Community College would be to impact our local economy? Through technical education, adult education, general education, business and industry, or, I think it says athletics?
I think it's E, all of the above. So, the biggest thing that we could, definitely the tech side. I'm a huge proponent of the tech side, I really am. That is something that if we provide the programs, you know, the HVAC is very much, I mean, it's full with a waiting list. So, you know, it's, so it's all those expansions and we want to get more kids through and more students through, I should say. It's tough because you have to figure out a way to get another, you know, instructors can only handle so much and when you're going to find instructors, you're also talking about going to find a new instructor that may be out in the private sector already. So, you've got to do that. So, it is all of those programs that are going to help the community grow. It's just a matter of finding which ones are best suited for our area.
Kay?
I'm also a huge advocate for our technical school. I see what a difference it has made in some of the individuals that I have worked with about how they're able to come out of that school, be able to support their family immediately. But I'm also a huge advocate for our adult education. I think we still need to be able to provide that GED services. We need to be able to provide those individuals the ability to get their GED, to then continue on to Seward County Community College, to be that funnel into them basically being able to transform their lives. I was very fortunate, higher education transformed my life. I really want people, everybody that they can, to have that same kind of ability. And so, again, I think Casey makes a good point about the technical school, but I would also be a real strong advocate for our adult education.
Brett?
Yeah, I think the nursing field and the vocational technical side of things need to be expanded. When we look at some of our success rates or graduation rates, some programs don't look all that successful because there's companies dangling money in front of their face, like, come work for me as a welder, you're going to make X and that opportunity is too good to pass up. So, we see there's a huge demand for a two-year VOTEC degree here and I think that we know our community, we know our community's needs and I think we really have to emphasize growing our VOTEC side of our college.
Dustin?
I would agree, all of the above. Like I said, we're in the business of providing opportunity for people that want to take advantage of it and I think under all those different programs that we have, we're providing those opportunities. A lot of different people engage us in different needs and stages of their life and all of those programs interact with different people in different ways to help them succeed.
Any additional comments? Okay, we will start with our closing remarks now and we will start with Kay.
I, again, appreciate the opportunity to talk about Seward County Community College. It was something that when I was on the board, I was very passionate about. I made it a priority. I never missed a meeting, I never missed a committee meeting, I never missed a presidential interview. I tried to go to as many activities on campus. I also assisted in establishing the food pantry on campus because that's also some of my background as far as what I do in my nonprofit work. But I just think that we are a gem and that people need to recognize just how transformative Seward County Community College is in people's lives here in our community. I was fortunate enough to be an instructor and to work with the students and to see how they went from struggling and barely making it to being able to find a good job to support themselves, to support their family. And so, I would appreciate the opportunity to continue to work on the board, but no matter what, I will always support Seward County Community College. It is a passion of mine.
Thank you. Brett?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the chamber once again and the community members for their questions, for caring so much to submit those questions. I'm excited to serve the Seward County community on the Seward County Board of Trustees. I think my business background, my strong ag background, my leadership qualities will be an asset to the community. I think there's a lot we can do with Seward County to take it to the next level. There's going to take an enormous amount of strategic planning as we grow the college to meet the community's needs, but I think the board and our current president has done a wonderful job setting our college up for success and I think there's a huge opportunity for growth here. Just once again, I want to thank you guys for coming out, thank you for listening online and on the radio and I would appreciate your vote November 4th.
Thank you. Dustin?
I, again, would like to thank the chamber for supporting this event. I'd also like to thank the community that we live in. You go across the state and we've been on different college campuses and those type of things and the community involvement and the community support that this institution gets is tremendous. I mean, not only is it tax dollars, we have one of the largest foundations in the state. That's local money supporting these opportunities for our fellow librarians, our Seward Canyans. So, it's just a pleasure to be in a community like this, that supports a college like this and I just want to be a part of that process. I appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Casey?
Yes, echo, thank you to the chamber, thank you to our citizens that are here in, at the chamber and everything. Seward County, Seward County Community College liberal, our part of the world, this is a very special place. This is my home. I want to see, I mean, when you go to other colleges, community colleges, and I've been on several, and it, you know, we are probably, we're at the top, we really are. And what I see is just a continuation of trying to get us better. That's what, that's what we strive to do as trustees, is to just give guidance. I want to thank everybody. I would, my name is Casey Meehan, for the people that are on the radio, I would appreciate your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
All right, thank you all for your willingness to serve Seward County Community College and for participating in our forum tonight. We wish you all the best. Now, we'll take a short break to regroup and have our USD 480 candidates take their place so we can begin the second part of our forum.
That concludes the portion of the show that had the candidates from the, from the Seward County Community College Board of Trustees and we'll see if we can't get a couple of them over here to share with us, but while they're getting to come on over here, I think we'll get Casey over here real quick and get him wired up and Jim will help us out, maybe get the next one wired up and keep them moving and... Because we're going to have a quick turnaround, they're only going to have a few minutes before they get the USD 480 people going and so, we're going to try to visit with them real quick here, see what they thought about how their night went and some of the questions that were asked. We'll give them each about a minute here. Go on in, Casey.
All righty. Well, unplug you here.
Yep, yep, there's a lot of wires to do these things. So, tell us a little bit, Casey, I mean, you've got this one in the books now, what, how'd you feel it went for you tonight?
Oh, I think it went great. I, you know, Seward County Community College is a place that I don't think there's anybody that's on the board, that's from, that's from our part of the world, that doesn't want the community college to be better. So, from that standpoint, everybody has their own perspective, everybody has their own, their own skill set that they bring to the board. I've been on, you know, several committees over the years, over the last past, almost nine years now. So, you mean, I sit on the insurance, on the insurance committee, sit on negotiations where we're talking to faculty and figuring out how we can figure out where we're going to be on salaries, on benefits, things like that. I sit on the foundation board as well. So, I mean, from my background, that's where I try to bring it. And just knowing that the main, the main purpose of what we do out there is just to try to make our part of the world better. That's really what it kind of comes down to.
What question tonight, I mean, there are a lot of questions about how it's funded and it's different than the region, so I want to talk to you about that one day a little bit. That option didn't get pitched out here, but what question do you think really stood out tonight?
Well, the pool, the pool question grabbed a lot of attention, of course. I mean, that's, that is something that I know is going to be, it's a hot-button subject. I mean, when we brought it to the public last time about a year ago on the idea that it might be a possibility, I mean, it got a lot of attention and we listened, you know, we understand that there is not, when it gets to be, you know, the colder months, there's not a lot of places to go, right? But, you know, it is at the point where, you know, we're going to have to figure out and I think everybody is on board, from my understanding, have at least listening, seeing if it makes sense to bring that as a solution for everybody involved. I mean, if you look at the, you know, what I've seen published, you know, even the city pool has had its, has its problems, so...
I'll start, he can finish. Didn't want to leave you hanging.
So, I mean, those are all things that are going to be brought to the forefront here very soon, so we're going to have to figure out a solution, really.
Yep, and I think it is going to have to be a cooperative effort, looking forward to that. Casey, we appreciate you tonight.
We betcha.
Thanks for coming over.
Thank you, Earl.
And good luck to you the rest of the race.
All right, thanks, sir.
We'll see if we can squeeze in at least one more. I don't know how quick we have. Rozelle said they're going to try to have a quick turnaround, see if we get Dustin in here and get him kicked on, make sure you kick it two over. They gave us a bad button in the middle to make us think it does something and it doesn't, so let's just double check. One more, there you go.
All right.
So, Dustin, you know, what a night here tonight to give you guys an opportunity to share with the public and how do you feel that the forum went tonight?
I think it went well. I think you've got four good choices up there. We're just trying to move on with what we've already got going and expand and be better.
What question do you think stood out tonight?
Probably the pool to a certain extent. I mean, it's a community concern as it should be. It's going to take a community to address it, so that's probably the ones that I think is probably more impactful tonight.
Sure, and then there was, you know, talk about funding and different ideas. I had not heard that sales tax, I have heard, you know, possible looking at a regent-type system and things like that, but in the funding, you know, and these different options you talked about, was there anything you felt differently or anything you didn't get to share tonight?
Not really. So, in the last legislative session at the state...
So in the last legislative session at the state, there was a lot of push and pull on community colleges and how that works out. So through that process, it's always a concern of the board or the college that we get left behind in those discussions. So it's just really important that we have legislators that are advocating for us and us advocating for ourselves whenever we have those opportunities.
Sure. Well, we appreciate you coming over tonight and sharing, thanks for being a participant and for the service that you've had at Seward County Community College.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll see if what they're going to say, if they're going to cut us off, or maybe we can see if we can squeeze in one more with Brett Reese here and get him...
Hey, Earl, how's it going?
All right, how you doing?
Oh, good, doing good.
Well, I don't know if you've ever ran for anything else before, or if this is your first shot, but how did you feel like this went tonight?
You're right, I've not run for anything before, but yeah, I thought tonight went great. I mean, the chamber does a great job of promoting this event and gives us an opportunity. You know, me being an outsider in the rural community, not living in Liberal, a lot of people don't have a name for my face or a face for my name, so it's nice to get out in the public just to let people know who I am, where I stand, what I believe in, and what my focus is.
Okay, Kelly, give me a quick mic check.
We definitely appreciate you coming in. They're going to cut us off and get this next...
Hello?
We want to invite you to come into the show sometime and get you on so you can share.
Everybody will take your seats, please. We'll get this started here.
About, give us about 30 seconds and we'll throw it to you.
We're going to be 30 seconds away from getting on to the next forum here with Seward County Community College. We're going to give Kay these 30 seconds. Come on in, Kay.
If I'm wrong, point to me.
They're keeping us on a short clock, so tell us, you know, what do you think stood out for you tonight?
You know, one of the things that I think is that any of us would be a good board trustee member. I'm always impressed by the board that I worked with, and I think, you know, it's one of those where you can't go wrong. I certainly would like to have people's votes.
10 seconds.
Everybody, I think, is truly passionate about Seward County Community College and wanting to serve.
Well, we want to get you in on the show so you can kind of give your platform there.
All right, we're ready.
They're cutting us short tonight, but thanks for coming over and sharing with us.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the USD 480 School Board Candidate Forum. I am Kelly Hill, a member of the Liberal Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and I will be tonight's moderator for the USD 480 portion of this forum. Tonight, we have six candidates running for three open positions for the USD 480 School Board. They are Alan Brown, Nick Hatcher, Travis Martinez, Lou Riggs, Terry Tanking, and Sarah Thomas, Thompson, excuse me. Tonight's forum is brought to you by the Liberal Chamber of Commerce, KSCB 1270 Radio, The Leader in Times, and La Mexicana Radio. We welcome our listening audience tonight and want to thank Seward County Broadcasting for airing this forum on KSCB 1270 AM. The Leader in Times is also live streaming the event on LiberalFirst.com, and it will be available to view on the Liberal Chamber, the La Mexicana, and the Leader in Times Facebook pages. We invite our listening audience to submit questions for our USD 480 candidates during this forum by calling 624-3855. That's 624-3855. Or by emailing info@liberalkansas, excuse me, info@liberalkschamber.com. That's info@liberalkansaschamber, excuse me, everyone. Cut off for submitting questions will be 8 o'clock if I'll get done reading this. We welcome those who have joined us in our audience here at The Depot. Anyone present may submit written questions for our candidates. Just ask one of our legislative committee members for a note card and turn in your question to Rozelle by 8:00. There will be no oral questions from the audience. Due to time constraints, there may be questions we don't have time to ask. Duplicate questions and personal attack questions will be eliminated. We ask those in the audience to turn off your cell phone for the courtesy of our candidates, remain quiet, and hold any applause until the end of the forum. Candidates, we ask you to please place your cell phones on the table by your name plates. I want to remind the candidates to use the microphone when speaking so our radio audience can hear you. I've got a lot of stuff here, folks. Following is a list of the forum rules for each candidate. Two minutes for opening remarks. One minute answer to each question. 30 seconds for additional comments. Two minutes for a closing. Ada Lineboker is our timekeeper and will signal you when time is about up and when to stop, so keep an eye on Ada. Each candidate will answer each question first on a rotating basis. We will now begin with opening remarks from each of you, and you have two minutes. We'll begin with the candidate, Mrs. Riggs.
Good evening. My name is Louz Riggs. I am a retired educator. I have taught in Liberal for 40 years. I am a Liberal High School graduate. Currently, I am a wife, mother, and a grandmother. I have been married for 42 years to my Liberal High School sweetheart, Sean Riggs. He's a retired teacher for 41 years, all in USD 480. After high school, I earned a bachelor's degree from Forhaste State University in Spanish, and then I continued on and got an elementary degree from Forhaste State University and a bilingual endorsement from Newman University. Therefore, I was given the privilege to teach seven years in elementary, 11 years at West Middle School, and 22 years at Liberal High School. My teaching experience has given me the passion and the honor and the privilege to teach. All prior experiences gave me the potential to be the leader that I strive to be. Finally, I am committed to listen, learn, and serve with transparency. A vote for me is a vote for experience in the classroom. I will be my, it will be my honor to serve on the USD 480 Board of Education. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Hi, my name is Alan Brown. I was born and raised in Liberal. My wife was born and raised in Liberal. We've been married 50 years actually this year. I've had an opportunity to be able to share and be on the board of USD 480 for a number of years, and I just, I look back and think, now, what do I have to offer to the board again, and where am I at with it? And I think I thought it's all caring. I've never quit caring about kids and teachers and our community, and I never will quit. I think that's what I have to offer to the, being a board member, is caring about the kids especially. I've had all of my children graduate from Liberal High School. I've had, I've got grandchildren in the school system now. I see all the kids around the community, how well they've come out and how successful they've been, where they go on to jobs or where they go on to college, and the many, many things they do. We've had a lot of changes in our district in the last few years, and I'm really excited about the direction we're headed. I just, again, want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to already serve, and I'd love to help continue to serve, and I'll never quit caring. Thank you.
Mr. Martinez?
So my name is Travis Martinez, and I don't got all the marriage that they got, but I have been married for 14 years. I got a son in fourth grade, a daughter in 10th grade, and a senior this year. But I ran back in 2023, and I feel that throughout the years that we're still missing quite a few things in our school district with maybe some rules, maybe some different kids, maybe with the low end of the kids, and not just taking priority of the top 10% of our students. So that's why I'm coming back, I'm running in '25, and I hope to get your vote on November 4th.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson?
My name is Sarah Thompson. I grew up here in Liberal, and I am a proud product of USD 480. My mother was an educator here for many, many years. My grandfather served on the school board. I ran four years ago to try and make a difference. I do not have children. I do not have children in the school system, and honestly, I think that makes us have a more diverse board. I have no hidden agenda. I'm here because I love Liberal. I love all things Liberal. If you know me, you know that. I love our school system. I love our youth. I work at Seward County Community College, so I have a deep love for education as well, and I want to see our local kids have opportunities, whether that's at Seward or any other secondary education experience as well. I will say, the last four years have been quite the learning experience, and at times very trying. Some of you may have heard I was not going to run again because I wasn't sure I had it in me to do another four years. And I had some high school students call me and ask me to reconsider, and the fact that we have students that are paying attention to what we are doing for them, for their education convinced me that it was worth rethinking and making that commitment to continue. I do feel like I'm a strong advocate for all of our students, and I also feel like I am a strong advocate for our educators.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Mr. Tanking?
Good evening, and welcome to, thank you for hosting this, and the fellow candidates that we have here. My name's Terry Tanking. I am honored to be here tonight as a candidate. I'm a lifelong member of this community. I graduated high school in '91 from here, went on to pursue my career and got a degree in Seward County. And then I continued to go to Northwestern in Alva, actually studied elementary education there, came back in and was hired by the fire department. I served a full-time volunteer there for 19 years. I'm currently at my same position at Triton Tools, which used to be Sam's Packer, for 23 years, and for the last 11, I've managed that yard. With my journey here in this community, I've served on a lot of boards. Was on the Rural Fire Board, been a big part of the Kids Inc. as a board member and as a coach. I've shared some committees and some volunteer work with my wife as well. We give back to the college, we host baseball players, we've done the summer baseball players, we've hosted 19 kids over the summer, and this last summer, we had six. So we enjoy being around the youth, as you can tell. And then a biggest one is I've been a part of Southwest Merkle's for 16 years, and I've been president of that for the last four years. So, like I said, I've been in the community all my life, and I want to try to make a difference and continue with providing a good education for these kids.
Mr. Hatcher?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the chamber for hosting this event. Good luck, you guys. It's going to be a good race. My name is Nick Hatcher. I'm a lifelong member of Liberal Kansas. I want to thank my wife for supporting me all these years. I've served 16 years and have thoroughly enjoyed being a board member at USD 480. The experiences that I've learned over the last 16 years, I feel like, will give me what I need to further another four years in making good decisions for the betterment of our students, the betterment of our community. I think it's very, very important that we have experience on this board, that we support our superintendent, and that we support our children in our community. I've had four children that graduated here at Liberal. One went on to graduate here at Seward County as well. The others are attending K-State and have graduated there. I love Liberal. They love Liberal. I think Liberal has the best people in all the world, and I'll say that to anybody that ever asked me. I'd like to have your vote. Thank you very much.
Now to the question portion of our forum. We'll go a couple candidates, and I'll repeat the question again before we continue. That way, our online listeners know what the premise of the question is. Mrs. Riggs, you drew number one, so...
I'll start with Alan.
Alan, excuse me. Okay, well, my first mistake. It happens.
Do that if you want me to be first.
It's okay. Alan's on my list over here. I'll screw Ada up. Alan, what is the role of a school board member?
There's a number of roles, but the biggest role that we have is to care about the kids and the instructional coaches and the teachers and the administration. But our two big jobs are to hire our superintendent and then to set policy and make sure that policy is followed. That is really, all the other things are what we can go enjoy and being around the kids and being around and hearing things, but that's our big job, is to set policy and see that it's followed through.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez?
Yes, I think the role of this is, you know, like Mr. Brown said, is to set the policy, work with your superintendent, hire your superintendent, but to let the superintendent do what he's allowed to do. The, our job is to make sure that we back him and that he's following what he needs to follow. I know there's policies in that we set, and I think we just got to keep those in order and make sure that those, the administration is also following those as well.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson?
The role of the school board is to hire the superintendent and set, update policy. Those are the two main things. But there's so, so much more that we should be doing, whether that's advocating for our students, advocating for our staff and teachers, coming up with creative ways to find more teachers, support the, not just our superintendent, but our district staff as well. So it all goes hand in hand, and, but the main, the main two things are to hire the superintendent and set the policy.
Thank you. Mr. Tanking, the question is, what is the role of a school board member?
Well, before I started this journey, it was, just like everybody else, I thought we could do this, this, and that. You know, we just talked about this before we got in here. It was, it was a, there's only a handful of stuff that we can do, and I was reminded of that just recently, and, but it didn't change my views, but like they said, the hiring of the superintendent and having his back and reassuring him that we have, or them, whoever it is at the time, that we're there for them. Obviously, the policies, we've got to take care of the policies, do our investigations and our research on those, and do what we need to do to get those in place. There are a few other things that I think that are important as well as the budget, obviously, and then reassuring our students that we have their back.
Thank you. Mr. Hatcher?
Great answers. I'm glad I'm on the last class over here. I can repeat everything I heard. They did a nice job. But those are exactly what the roles and responsibilities of a board member are. Support the superintendent, and if need be, fire the superintendent. Advocate for our kids. Manage and help set a budget. Set policy and make sure that we're following policy. But I truly believe that advocating for our kids is right up there at the top for me. So, there you have it.
Thank you. Mrs. Riggs?
I'm glad you asked that question because that's one of the questions I asked our current superintendent when I met with him the second week he was here. Number one is to support the superintendent, to advocate for the students, the parents, and the teachers. But not just to do that, we must listen and serve with transparency. So when the community has questions, we should be able to answer with clarity and transparency. And also, we're to collaborate with the central office, the main office staff. When the superintendent has meetings and we have questions and I need to go research on some questions that I was asked by the community, I know which office I need to go to. And that's my role as superintendent. The superintendent, the first thing he said is, the board is to do the what, and he is to do the how. And that's what the role of a superintendent, I mean, a board member is, sorry.
Thank you. Our next question will be with Mr. Martinez. How would you encourage parents to become more involved in their children's education?
Yeah, so this is a question that's been asked to me a lot. Yeah, so this is a question that's been asked to me a lot and by migrant parents is how can they be more involved and get the questions and answers that they look to get? And I think that's just reaching out to who your children go to every day. If that's a homeroom teacher, if that's your principal. There is a chain of command that you still have to take in consideration of when to go to there or how to go to there. But I believe that the parents have to get involved by going to see what your children do every day. Going to whatever school they are and getting involved in those activities that they have.
Mrs. Thompson?
He's absolutely right. An active parent needs to show up at the schools. They need to know their children's teachers, they need to know those principals, they need to know the counselors. They need to be willing to ask questions, they need to be willing to advocate for themselves as a parent and say, I need a translator in here or, or no, or be willing to ask, how do I get a translator? Because we are more than willing to provide that. I would love more parents to come to some of the school board meetings to know what exactly is going on, on our end and to ask us questions as well. If we needed to provide translation at those meetings, I, in my opinion, I feel like we could do that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Tanking?
Ultimately, I would like for every parent to put in hours every semester, but that's just not the world that we live in and, and even me, as my job, I wouldn't know if I would have the time to be able to do that, but you gotta make it for your kids. But like a few of them said, that events, activities, make it where the, it's enjoyable for the parents to be there. If it's feasible, make them, make it activities where they, they wanna come, family picnics and such. But that's, and maybe every semester, have an orientation with the kid and their parents. That might get the parents more involved.
Mr. Hatcher, the question is, how would you encourage parents to become more involved in their children's education?
First, we have to make sure that we're providing a safe environment for their child and when that happens, parents will feel safe coming into those facilities as well. We have to welcome those parents, we have to welcome them into the buildings, we have to ask them to participate, ask them to be a part of what's going on at the school, ask them to be a part of what's going on with their children. And, and a lot of times, we might have to educate parents on what they're, what they can do or what they can't do. I, I think a lot of times, parents, they drop their kids off and they expect us to raise them. You know, you think about it, school system spends most of the time with the child once they enter the school system. So, maybe we need to ask them back, make them a part of the, a family in the school system.
Mrs. Riggs?
First of all, we will need to utilize what we're currently doing. We do have parent coordinators in every building in our district. So, the key will be to collaborate with the parent coordinators because they're the ones that actually visit with the parents. And second thing that we've done and we're still doing in the district is we always have parent surveys in Spanish and English and I think we even had it before in Vietnamese. And that way, the parents will tell us, why is it that they're not coming? Because many times it's because they don't feel comfortable, it's not that they don't want to, they don't know how to. Therefore, utilizing the parent coordinator, that would be the first thing I would do. And the third thing will be is that having porch visits. And the porch visits consist of when the parent coordinator and the, the counselors sometimes make those porch visits and those have been very beneficial.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Well, there's a lot of things that we need to do, but there's a lot of things we are doing for the parents to be more involved. We have apps that you can tell what your kids are doing, what their grades are in the classroom. I think that helps the teachers and the students more than anything, when you can look and see what your individual child is doing and make them accountable. Are they getting their papers in? Are they not getting their papers in? That's available, we just need to make sure we communicate to everyone that they use it. Ones that are using it, it's been amazing. There's people that open it up and see their kids either are tardy or they've not got their papers in and it changes when they get home because they do look online and see what their kids are doing. I think that's one of the really neat things that parents can get involved with.
Thank you. Our next question, Mrs. Thompson. What, if any, capital improvements should be made in properties or possible projects for USD 480?
We've, we've got a lot of projects that we have discussed, that we're looking at, that, things that need to be updated. The new high school is over 40 years old, so, but everybody in town still calls it the new high school. We have made upgrades there, but there's still a lot more that need to be done. I don't know if many of you have seen the new library, since it's been remodeled, it, that was one thing I was very passionate about when I got on the board was getting that remodeled because of some safety concerns with the different levels and things like that. But we need some ups, updated athletic facilities for Title IX issues, the theater or the, yeah, the auditorium, sorry, couldn't think of that word. The auditorium needs some updates, the, the stage needs replaced, we've, we're able to do the rain wall, but there's some bathrooms, other things that need fixed as well.
Thank you. Mr. Tanking?
That's a good question, that's a lot that I'd like to, to do more research on is, is that, but that, like she said, athletics is, is a big thing that you need to get up to, up to, to standards on. Walking in the hallway with all these students, especially at the high school, there's so many kids up and down that hallway, in the future, we might have to look at expanding that somehow.
Mr. Hatcher?
Capital projects, something that I've always wanted to have done is possibly tie the, the building on the west side to the main building so that students aren't walking outside, same as the east campus, tie those two buildings together. High school's 40 years old, we've made some renovations to it, but you know, the community still calls it the new high school. It's 40 years old, it's, it's getting close to the end of it, end of life. So, there's a lot of things in that building that could be done. That building was designed for, I believe, 800, 900 students and I think we have roughly 1,400 students in it now. So, it, it's, there's a lot of areas that need to be expanded. Title IX, we don't have near enough space for our wrestling program, we don't have enough dressing rooms for some of our women. Like Sarah said, the auditorium, list, there's a big list.
Thank you. Mrs. Riggs, the question is, what if any capital improvements would be ma, should be made in properties or possible projects for USD 480?
Well, there's always gonna have to be a room, areas that we need to improve. However, my, my take on that is this, we need to prioritize our plans and do the needs instead of the wants.
Mr. Brown?
I think there's quite a few things that we're looking at. One of them that was talked about earlier with Seward County is we've gotta look at something with a swimming pool, whether we do or don't want one. We have a swim team at the, the high school, so we're gonna have to deal with that issue in a short time. We have to look at, out at the Redskins Field, our restrooms are still, they were built in 1965 and they still don't meet any ADA codes and I think that's somewhere we need to get things taken care of. But other than that, I'm really proud of what the, the district and what the board has got together with, the whole community has really got behind all the projects we've had, the last bond issue we had, it's just amazing, the buildings that these kids have to, to be educated in and I'm, I'm really proud of what they're doing and what we have done and there's always things to look forward to. And again, as what Lou said, we have to look at the needs, but that comes along with, again, how many kids we have and what kinda activities they're in. Like Nick said, we're short of wrestling space. Anything we're short of, I think we need to look at.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez?
Yeah, so, I know everybody's talking about the high school, but I think we need to look at this as a whole, as a whole community and all, all schools. The high school's been there 40 years, the new high school, as they would say, but we also have had cottonwood, we've also had sunflower that need updates there. You got play equipment that over there at Sunflower that, that's older on that side of it. You got a fence around that probably hasn't ever been changed around the outdoor soccer, just things that, that, not only at the high school, there's, there's other things that can be looked at. We got, we don't got our own baseball fields, we don't got our own softball fields. I know there's been talk about getting an indoor baseball and softball complex for these guys. They come down to the city, as I work for the city, and they utilize ours. So there is quite a few other things and I've seen the plans for those rooms and different classrooms and weight room and wrestling room down there that, that could be a change.
Thank you. Our next question starts with you, Mr. Tanking. What suggestions would you propose to help alleviate teacher shortages?
To alleviate the teacher shortage?
Yes, sir.
The biggest thing is, I, I know that we probably have a program already in staff was, is trying to, like the nursing program, once you go to the program here, help fund that and then you give us some time back. I think if we can implement that a little bit more with our teaching program, I know that they talked about some online classes for teachers and if they could do that here and get them encouraged to stay here and help, help them absorb some of those costs and then give us some time back.
Thank you. Mr. Hatcher?
Well, one of the things that we are doing now is basically grow your own teachers. We have quite a few teachers that are working towards their certification and we have tuition help for those people. We also, we've got, working at trying to get certified teachers in, providing a, an amount of money that people can live on and, and support their families is one of, one of the things that I've been preaching for a number of years. There's a teacher shortage all across the United States, administration shortage across the United States. Once people get here in Liberal, because we have great people in our district, great people in our community, they tend to stay. I'm looking at one over here. So, we, we do have great people in our community, so that being a great thing to have.
Thank you. Mrs. Riggs?
Thank you for that question. I agree with Mr. Hatcher to help grow our own intern that want to stay in Liberal by giving them the proper support, which we're starting to do that. However, though, I do believe that if we are gonna give them a financial support, there has to be some kind of reciprocation that comes with that. If we are gonna give them financial support, we must have them sign some kinda contract, they're gonna stay here for a while, otherwise, they're just gonna stay here for two day, two years, get their degree, get the financial support and leave. Also, every time we bring new staff that moves, I mean, new teachers that move in, they don't, they cannot find housing. They just can't. Other districts, what they do different, they have a signage bonus. We used to have a 500 bonus that we used to give teachers, but 500 only pay for groceries.
Thank you. Mr.? We'll take a pause real quick.
I totally agree with raising our own and I think we've got a really good program to start getting people to, to want to be teachers in our high school and moving on through and having them come back to Liberal. That's one of the best places we can get them to come back and stay. I will say that the teachers that we are helping fund their education right now do sign contracts and they do put in time of X amount of years by how much extra school we give them. So there is a contract that is signed with those people, so they're not just getting money and then there's nothing to hold them here. So, that's really important. But then I also want, I've been fortunate to be on the retention committee and we've got some teachers in Liberal that are on that committee that have just done an outstanding job to try to put things out for teachers to, we've had taco trucks at the schools just to thank them for what they do. They've done, I mean, they've put in hours and hours of, of things for the teachers and it's been really amazing. And that's our teachers helping other teachers stay and that's really important.
Thank you. We'll, we'll pause till the train leaves us, sorry Alan, I, I tried to slow you down Also too, I, I've robbed you of the opportunity of rebuttals up to this point that I've been made aware of. So there will be a 30-second rebuttal after all these questions, if you have something. Don't be afraid to pop in and say it.
Do, I just wanna add a little bit to it after they.
Now I know what they're talking about downtown. It's a good one.
It's a big one.
Okay, I think we're in the clear. Mr. Martinez, the question was, what suggestions would you propose to help alleviate teacher shortages?
Yeah, I think just.
That's after, after it's done.
So I think it's, it's just like everyone said, you know, growing our own. I know the program was, has been in there for a while, I just don't think anybody knew how to use it at the time. And I think that now there's a way to find the information. I had an employee myself come to me, she works at one of the schools and she asked if she could get more hours with me and, cause she was an intern teacher, had her own classroom and then they had to let her go. So I reached out to one of the board members this summer and he put me in the right direction of where, where she needed to go. She went straight to her principal and the principal showed her what she needed to do and the pathway that the school district has in effect right now. So, just growing within yourself and getting the interns that are there.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson?
Absolutely, grow our own. As everyone has said, it's a shortage across the nation, that's, that's where we're at. We, we don't have a choice but to, to grow our own. We, we have been brainstorming on this since I've been on the board, ways to recruit and, and grow our own. We are offering help with those college tuition, with hiring bonuses. We do need better education of how these programs work and with that, we have recently hired a, a district recruiter and that person is also kind of the one that's working with all the interims and working with those programs and explaining and making sure that those people on those pathways know where they're going and what their pathway is. We also have just been able to get 20 teacher apprenticeships approved by the state and we're very excited about that as well, it's a great opportunity.
Is there any rebuttals? I knew you didn't need them. Your next question is, is a call-in question. What is your stance on broadcasting school board meetings? Equipment has been purchased, but not yet implemented.
Nick?
Nick, Mr. Hatcher?
That's an interesting question right there. If I remember right, I think I was opposed to that. But I don't necessarily think that I would stand on that. I would love to have more participation in our meetings, I would love to have more people... I would love to have more people come, but I know it's not possible. So having it broadcast, it would be fine with me. I've come to the realization that, you know, we are in a social media world. We got cameras on us now. I don't ever remember that before sixteen years ago or whenever it was, but I I wouldn't be opposed to it.
Thank you. Mrs. Riggs.
Would you repeat the question?
Yes, ma'am. What is your stance on broadcasting school board meetings?
I think that is an excellent way to show transparency within our community. The community needs to know what kind of decisions we're doing and how we collaborate as a board. Yes, I will be in favor a hundred percent. I've been asking that question since I was teaching in liberal high school. Why aren't we trans, every other district does that. We need to move forward in terms of media, not backwards.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Well, as you say, we've already purchased the equipment. It should be going online real shortly. I don't know exact time, but it's a little behind schedule, so we should be getting that done. I think it's great to be transparent, but I I want to go farther than that. We've talked about it as a board. I would like to see us be proactive and like on Thursday or Friday when the agenda comes out, make that public and have a podcast or be online to to tell our people what we're going to be talking about. Unfortunately, if you're at home sitting watching a school board and an interesting subject comes up that you wish you could talk about, you don't have time to get there. But if we would let people know on Thursday or Friday what we're going to talk about on Monday, I think it would help a lot in that transparency, that people could come. And we welcome all the people to come to the school boards, but I think it would be a lot more people would know what we're doing and be able to be involved.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez, the question is, what is your stance on broadcasting school board meetings?
Yeah, so I think it's a broadcasting is a great idea. I know the county does it, city does it, and I think it gets out there. People watch it, people go and see it. I just don't think that the facility to do it in is the right facility. An ice maker comes on and you can't hear nothing. You can't hear nothing in that cafeteria, so I don't believe it's the right facility to broadcast anything in. But I do am for broadcasting those those meetings.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson.
I did vote to broadcast and to purchase the equipment for that. I also like the idea because then if somebody's watching it online, it can be translated into the the subtitles can be translated into whatever language they need to understand what is happening at that meeting. I do also agree with Alan about the the board agenda technically is out on Thursdays. It's on board docs for anybody that wants to look that up, but not everybody understands how to use, get on there and find it. It's not always the easiest place to find. So if we could get that out in a different way to give the community a better idea of what would be at that next meeting, so if they thought they needed to be there to voice their opinion or ask questions, they could do that.
Thank you. Mr. Tanking.
Actually, I'm surprised that we don't have it already. I know that with the equipment's bought, I'm for it. But I'm like, Mr. Brown, I think that once the agenda's out, that I think that we need to educate our parents, whether it's on social media like he said, and then explain what's on the agenda, explain in depth what it's about, and then have the captions in both languages or other languages of the of the students that we have, just to be up with the times.
Thank you. Are there any rebuttals?
I do want to add one thing, too. We always have good things at our meetings, which is usually students from elementary, middle school, and high school that always come, and it would be great to see them televised. And I think that's going to get more parents involved. When you see your kids on TV, you're going to watch more of the meeting, and I think that's going to be a a great plus also.
Ms. Thompson.
We have looked at other places that we could possibly hold those meetings that would be big enough for the board and for people to come. And we've thought we had a few possibilities, and then cost of making them accessible and the sound and everything, right, so far have been prohibitive. So we are aware that that is, the ice maker is really irritating and sometimes gets shut off, so.
Thank you. Our next question is for you, Mrs. Riggs, starting off. What is the most important concern that you want to see addressed as a board member? And how will you address that issue in the next four years if you are elected?
My biggest concern, obviously, we we talked about it earlier, the retention of teachers and how, well, we're starting off by hiring a director to recruit teachers. And but once again, we need to be sure that we listen to the current veteran teachers to see what we need within our district. And just pretty much, you know, I I know she has a job description, so hopefully we can be, we'll be able to measure that in the future to see if that position was worth adding by measuring the number of teachers that we have, that we bring within the next few years.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Repeat the question, please.
Yes, sir.
Could you?
What is the most important concern that you want to see addressed as a board member at USD four eighty? And how will you address that if you are elected?
I think the biggest concern we've had in the past few years is trust, and I think we have to get trust back among our teachers, from their administrators, from from district office, from our community. But I think when you have trust, everyone does better. The kids have to trust their teachers, and I think that's what we really, really need to work on, is just that everyone will trust each other, that we're all on the same page, doing the same thing, trying to increase the student learning and make it better for our kids and our families.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez.
Yeah, so I think there, from twenty-three, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five, there's been so much improvement from what was so negative in twenty-three to what is now. And I had so much negativity back in twenty-three on different items that the school board was putting on and different things. And coming through those, it's not just about what I can change, it's about what us as a team, us as a board can change. And I think that's what we need to look at as not just an individual, but as the whole board members. And there's a lot of things, you know, I'm still not a fan of the high school schedule, and I've talked to the superintendent about it, and there's things that have changed, but there's good things that have came through through the last few years that my kids have been going through that. And it's given them opportunities, but I still feel that there's still kids in the school district that aren't benefiting from that. So for me, myself, it's just to look more into what can be done better.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson, the question is, what is the most important concern for you to, that you want to see addressed as a board member if you are elected? And how will you address that concern?
I think the most important thing we need to focus on is the culture of the district. That includes the trust, that includes a lot better communication from district office to to the principals, to the staff, and backwards. And from the board to the staff and administration as well, and and back to us. I think once you can build that positive culture, which I feel like we've made great strides in with the hire of our new superintendent, Mr. Richardson, I think he has been a positive light. But I think that once you get that culture and that trust and that communication, that helps with your retention, that helps with your recruitment. And then it just is a snowball effect.
Thank you. Mr. Tanking.
My major concern with with it is, and it's at all levels, the elementary up to the high school is the the parent-student accountability. And and what I mean about that is, starting with the small things, you know, getting your kids in school on time, the dress codes, the the cell phones, the little things. And if you get those fixed or or start working on those things, then you get the trust factor that they've been both talking about. What can I do about that? Obviously, that's not one of the roles of of us, but what I would do is I would I would start with the top and work with the chain of command with that and see what I can do to help initiate it and and stay advocate about it.
Thank you. Mr. Hatcher.
Student achievement. We've got one of our goals as a board, and I I think it's probably one of the very most important things that we have concerning USD four eighty. And in a way to increase student achievement, one is by aligning all curriculum with Kansas standards through quality professional development and training. USD, increase accountability scores by three and a half percent in the area of in the area of ELA, math science, and chronic absenteeism. Create a recruitment and retention program to increase our certified positions from sixty-five percent to eighty percent over the next five years. Drive instruction to meet students' needs through data-driven assessments, reports, benchmarks, report cards, and walkthroughs. Utilize programs such as CTE, dual credit, and alternative education to improve our graduation rate. I think these things plus our culture in our district will help achieve better student achievement, and that's one of my biggest concerns.
Thank you. Would anybody like to add?
Yes, I do. I, my second concern is the academic achievement, like Nick mentioned. We are good, but we're not great, in that we have work to do. We have students that don't even know how to fill out applications, simple applications. How do you get there? By hiring qualifying teachers.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. Our next question here is for Mr. Brown, starting off. Do you believe that the current state assessments for USD four eighty are trending in the right direction?
That's a tough decision because I've never thought they've done a great job with it. So I think locally, we have done a better job setting some of our own standards and trying to increase things. Our our test scores, there's nothing to be excited about. We haven't done as well as we should, but it doesn't take into account a lot of things that we have out here that we're dealing with, with kids coming in that haven't had a background of education. And when you look at those kids, they've come a long ways, and in their state standards, it doesn't give them any any credit for not for learning as fast as they have, and and I think we've done a really good job. I think we can do better. The state standards always scare me because they come from back east and they don't account for Western Kansas ideas and our values and our morals out here. And I just, I would rather see us have something in our own areas.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez.
Yeah, so the way our culture is, is, you know, the a lot of students coming into liberal know little or know English, even going into your your high school. So from the state side of it, like Mr. Brown said, and the east side, they probably have great scores here. We haven't had probably great scores since two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve or even before that. But I think if we we allow our students to continue as as they do and the programs we continue to give them, instead of holding them accountable, I believe that's why our our students aren't succeeding. We have so many opportunities that students go to focus, they go to alternative school, they go to somewhere else, and then they, but they all started at the high school, and then they all ended up at a different secondary education through some part of the high school. And I think that we got to leave our kids accountable and keep them in the high school and show them what is right, what is wrong, and hopefully that can make the the scores go where they need to be.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson.
I do think that our test scores have started to show a little improvement. I do agree, there's a lot of things that factor into standardized testing of any kind. Not everybody's a good test taker. Not everybody speaks the same language that the test is given in or has a full understanding of the language. A child that may be taking a test hasn't had anything to eat yet that day. They may not, they may have some mental health issues from things going on at home. All those things factor in. And are we there to fix those things? That's not our job. We're the educator, we're there to educate, but if we can't get them to where they can learn and take those tests, we're doing them a disservice. So we have to address all the needs to get them to test well and learn well.
Thank you. Mr. Tanking, the question is, do you believe that USD's four eighties current state assessments are trending in the right direction?
I'm not sure if they are. I'm not a fan of them, but I would like to do a little more research on them to get a full feeling of it. If we if we could, like it was said, that maybe you have our own standards or our own regulations on them.
Mr. Hatcher.
Current situation, I do believe we are trending in a upward trajectory. And USD four eighty has had its ups and downs over the last several years, but and it's really hard to pinpoint exactly what the issue is and why. But I can tell you through better leadership, you're going to get better education, you're going to get a better culture, and that's going to lead to better education for everybody in our district. Having more certified teachers, there's a shortage across the United States and Kansas. We don't have near enough certified teachers for our district, but it's not just us, it's everybody. So, yes, I do believe we are trending in the right direction. I I do wish I that we would do a better job or that we were trending faster and higher, but it it's, education is one of those things that it takes a long time to get things in the right position, to make sure they're implemented correctly, and also have have the leadership that you've got to have in order to make all that happen.
Mrs. Riggs.
Standardized testing has always been a challenge, just like Sarah stated, that not every student is a good test taker. However, as a as an educator, we need to stop making excuses of why we're not getting better. We need to, we must find solutions. And one of them is, our district did one of the best things a few years ago when we hire instructional coaches. Instructional coaches' job is to train and support current teachers so we can individualize learning, because, like you all know, not all of us learn the same way. And instructional coaches, as you know in the media, it's their week, we must praise them, they do an awesome job of supporting teachers, and the teachers support the students better so we can move forward with our test course. And yes, we are improving, and some of the, some of the schools are improving their reading and writing skills.
Would anybody like to add? Okay, thank you.
And we will break in at this point. We have ten seconds for station identification or broadcast obligation. This is KSCB Liberal. Now back to the forum.
Okay, welcome back. Next question is for Mr. Martinez, I believe. Do you believe the district partnering with the city and the college on the pool is a good idea?
So I do believe it is a good idea. You know, I work on both sides of this. I'm running for school district and I work for the city, and I see benefits for the school side of it. And the pool is solely done with the swim team of the schools. The schools use it, and I believe ten to fifteen community members use the county's pool. Does that justify that the Seward County should take the full thing? I don't believe so. But I do believe that the that the three entities should work together and come up with something to figure out what can be done to. to figure out what can be done to that pool or a new one.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson.
I have been involved in those meetings between the three entities, and I do also believe that it is something that we need to be a part of. You know, we have a strong swim team at the high school. But more than that, we, they are doing the heavy recruiting, and we have a lot of kids coming up in the junior highs that are going to be adding to that, and it's going to be even bigger than what it is right now. And, you know, that's about as many kids on the swim team as there is on the football team. So we've got to look at a way to support all of our students. And I think if we can find a way for all the entities to work together to make that happen so that it's a competition-sized pool that community members can also use and that the college has access, you know, that everybody can utilize, I think it's a win for everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Tanking.
I was here earlier when they were talking about it with the college forum. This is a subject that's going to need a lot of research. I know that we do a lot of things with the city, the college, and the city, or I mean the school, and that's great. It's good that we can all three work together, but it has to be divided three ways, or, you know, whoever uses it the most. But like I said, it's going to need to be a lot of research. Pools are a lot of maintenance, a lot of work. But I'm not against it. I think that it would benefit all three, but it just needs to be researched very heavily.
Thank you. Mr. Hatcher, the question is, do you believe the district partnering with the city and the college on the pool is a good idea?
Absolutely. I think it's a great idea. It's not just a city, school, or college issue. This is a community issue. And I think we should move in that direction, involving the community, trying to develop what's best for our community, knowing the issues at the college with their pool. It's not going to last, it's going downhill quickly. Talking about closing it, I hear the city pool has issues of its own, and there's some rumor or talk that they may be looking at trying to close it as well. And if that happens, what are we going to do for our community? It's, like I said, it's not city, it's not a city, it's not a college thing. This is a community thing. And I think we need to look at it in that way and focus and try to make what we think is best for the community and let the community tell us.
Thank you. Mrs. Riggs.
I will have to do a little bit more research on that, but based on what I've heard earlier and I read in the paper, since anytime you take different agencies collaborating to come up with the best solution or how to help the pool and who uses it, and to benefit the whole community, it's always going to be good. So, and I just hope that our, those agencies, as they collaborate, they prioritize what is, what we need first.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Yes, I totally believe our community needs a pool. I believe it needs to be with a joint collaboration with the city and USD 480 and the college. I think it's a quality of life we need in liberal. I don't think we want to be without one. I don't really care how many kids are on the swim team or how many people are there. You build it and they will come. It's something that the college has had a lot of use at different times. I know even their sports teams use it for their offseason training. It gets used more than people think, but if we put it in an area and all of us are involved, I think we all could enjoy it and we could make it something special. And I agree with Nick, we need to build it right, and we need to do it with the right kind of research, but we need to build it big enough and nice enough that we're all going to be proud of it.
Thank you. Is there anything anyone would like to add? Mr. Hatcher.
Yeah, I'd like to point out that there is collaboration already in our community. USD 480 utilizes the city's baseball diamond and softball diamonds for our women's softball and men's baseball program. The college is utilizing the facilities at the football field and practice field for their soccer program. So we already have collaboration within our community. And I think it's, this is one more thing that we, if we all come together, we can work on and make a solution.
Mr. Brown.
Adding to that, too, I think we all use Jim Maskus Auditorium for numbers of reasons, for, our whole community does, different organizations use it, and that's another way that we've shown that working together, we don't need to have three different auditoriums in town. If we take care of each other and work together, it's better off for the taxpayers.
Our next question tonight is for Mrs. Thompson first. How do you feel about the high school's flex mod schedule?
Well, I, as most people know, have not been a fan of that. In fact, I was adamantly against it when I got on the school board. Through a lot of tense meetings and conversations with administrators and teachers and students, I, I'm still not the biggest fan, but I do see how in some instances it does benefit students. I do agree with Mr. Martinez that a large part of our population it is not working for. So I think that now I'm at a place where I think we've got to come up with a solution that is maybe a compromise somewhere in the middle. I don't know what that looks like yet, but we've done a lot of, we've had a lot of conversations around this. And I've been to a lot of extra meetings at the high school and with our educators and students about it. I don't know what the right answer is, but I think it's going to have to be a compromise. It's going to have to be somewhere in the middle.
Thank you. Mr. Tanking.
When I first heard about it, I was 1,000% against it. I didn't believe in all the downtime, seeing all the kids that are leaving the schools and skipping out on that when they're having that downtime. But as I talked to people as far as teachers and kids, I kind of changed my mind a little bit, not all the way, but a little bit. I think it does need modified. How do we do that? I don't have the complete answer for that, but I would like to research it more. One thing that I would like to propose is maybe that we could get the superintendent in a committee to go visit somewhere that does have this and see what we can do to change it a little bit. I don't feel like we can change it again because I don't know how many times these kids have gone through a change in their schedule, but it definitely does need some tweaking.
Thank you. Mr. Hatcher.
I've got mixed emotions either way. I've talked to my children. My children, I think, did very well with the flex mod. I've talked with some parents that their children aren't doing very good with it. I've talked to some parents that love it. I've talked to teachers that like it, I've talked to teachers that don't like it. I'll be honest with you, it takes, it's going to take a lot. I don't like the overlaps that are in the scheduling and things like that. But it's not, it's not really, the board really can't do anything about it. There's procedures in place that limit, limits the board's ability to make a change. So until we get some of those changes made, I think that our hands are somewhat tied in trying to make a change. I do think that if there was a modification of some sort, I think that would be beneficial.
Thank you. Mrs. Riggs, the question is, how do you feel about the high school's flex mod schedule?
I could actually write a book about it. Due to my experience at Liberal High School for 22 years, I worked under the traditional schedule and flex mod. Flex mod works for a small number of students, the self-motivated students. We need a schedule that better ensures engagement and academic success for the majority of the students. I believe the traditional schedule allows students to take classes at Seward County and internships. Flex mod has a management issue with overlaps, PLTs, inconsistency. We have one of the hardest teachers at Liberal High School try to manage. Personally, for the last eight years, I did what I could because I am a good teacher and I was able to provide a learning as much as I could to the students, but not enough processing of what I was teaching.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
Well, first and foremost, I am not an educator, so I'm not the one to be saying what we should be doing as far as a schedule. But if there was the perfect schedule, everyone would be using it. So there isn't a perfect schedule, and I think we have to go back to that issue that I said earlier. We have to trust, we have to trust our staff, we have to trust our parents and our administrators to bring options back to us. As far as I'm concerned, I'm not against any change. I just don't want to change just to change. Bring us something that is going to work, that the teachers and the administrators are support, and I'll support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez.
Yes, I believe I ran my campaign over this in '23, that I was not for this. But now I get off of work, and that's my first thing that I love to go home and argue to my two daughters about, of what they did at school today. One gives me a hard time, and the other one doesn't. The one that gives me a hard time is she loves the schedule. She gets to go to work, she gets to do an internship, and she gets to go to class. But what did she do today, on this day? On Tuesday, she didn't have a class. Why? I don't know. I asked my younger daughter, she doesn't really care. She goes to school, she does what she needs to, but the thing that I heard today was that her teacher that she had as an intern, she wasn't learning very much. And today, with one of her new Philippine teachers, she said she learned everything that she possibly learned at the beginning of the school year to now. That was due to the mod schedule, giving her more time with that teacher. So I'm not for it, and I think there still needs to be a little bit of change.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to add? Our next question. Mr. Hatcher, you're first here. Terry. Terry. Let's say.
We had the last question.
No, Sarah started.
Okay, so it's Terry.
Excuse us.
Lots of questions.
We're not married. Mr. Tanking, your next question is, what are your thoughts about the two-thirds vote that is currently in the negotiated agreement?
I'm going to just be honest with you, that's something that I do not have a lot of knowledge on, and I would really like to do a little more research on. I guess there's been some Zoom meetings, I've been trying to watch that and learn a little bit more, but I will be honest, that is something that I need to know a little bit more about.
Mr. Hatcher.
Ask me the question again.
What are your thoughts on the two-thirds vote that is currently in the negotiated agreement?
Well, thoughts opens that thing up to a wide variety of issues to talk about, but my personal views are, is that particular part of the negotiated agreement, I don't feel like should be there. I feel like that is something that, that decision and those, the process in which to make that change should be at the district level, at superintendent level. There's no accountability. I can't go to my superintendent today and go, hey, this is not working, we need to make a change, whatever, what do you think we need to do? It just doesn't work that way, and it won't happen overnight. So my personal thoughts are that I feel like it's encringing on the duties and the responsibilities of administration.
Mrs. Riggs.
I totally agree with Nick. I don't know for sure, I'm not, I was not aware of exactly the number until this summer when I noticed the negotiating team, again, voted to have two-thirds of the votes of teachers. However, I think that takes the autonomy of the superintendent to do his job when he is the one that listens to all the community people coming and asking, why are we, why is my son or daughter not learning all day long? Why do they have this PLT? Why are they at McDonald's and not being in the classroom learning? It's too many free time, it's a lot. And I just, I don't understand why that negotiating was ever negotiated. I spoke to a couple of superintendents outside our district. They were, when I explained to him what I knew, he was blurred away of why we ever, that was ever negotiated.
Mr. Brown, the question is, what are your thoughts on the two-thirds vote that is in the current negotiated agreement?
I think the reason that it is in there is because of lack of trust, and I go back to that trust issue. I think if the teachers are given an idea of what would work, and they get the support from the district office, our superintendent, and everyone to make any kind of a change, and they have that trust factor again, the 67% isn't going to make any difference. It's going to be way more than that if we have the trust. And again, I think that's why it got negotiated in there, because teachers felt like they didn't trust what was going on with the board and on down. And I think we have to work hard to get that trust back, and I don't think it's going to be an issue after that. If we have something good enough that the educators all decide that it's better for our students, then it's going to be a high percentage that are going to vote for it.
Mr. Martinez.
Yeah, so like Terry said, but I'm going to echo what Mr. Hatcher said, is we've got to get it back to kind of what, to the superintendent, it leaves things on the table that we can't take into consideration just overnight. And I think that with taking that out and letting the superintendent or us going, the board going, and being able to discuss something or trying to change something, I just feel that with that being in place is just one more step that is not needed.
Thank you. Mrs. Thompson.
So for clarification, the two-thirds vote to change a schedule is currently two-thirds votes of certified teachers in the classroom, or is it what it was until negotiations this year? This year, it's been changed to two-thirds vote of certified staff in the building. So previously, like if you, your administrators, your counselors, your instructional coaches, those people that were also certified teachers but were not in a classroom, they did not get to vote. So that has, that is one change that was made this year. Nick and I are on the negotiations team. I agree with Nick. I think it shouldn't be in there. It does hamstring us to make our administration accountable when there's problems. He is not able to go in there and immediately find a way to fix it because of that being in there.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else to add? Yes, sir, Mr. Hatcher.
A situation or a thing like that in our district doesn't come lightly. There are ways about going about making that change. I think that we could implement a policy that would include teachers, administration, board members, community members, parents, anybody that had input into that process. Got the stop sign. I was just on a roll.
You only have 30 seconds.
I'll finish that for you. We've actually...
There is a policy that's been created that has been kind of looked at, and it hasn't gone to the board yet, that would, that would help ensure that everybody got a say before a change was made. If that was taken out of the negotiating... If that was taken out of the negotiated agreement, that there wasn't a vote, and that it was back to administration, this policy, if we put it into place, it would give room for teachers, everybody to have comment.
Thank you. That was here.
Now you're here.
Mr. Hatcher, the question is, how is USD 480 administration evaluated, and whom should do that?
That is a board responsibility. And the current evaluation is, we'll evaluate our superintendent twice this year, twice next year, and then after that, it'll be based on one time a year. So there's a self-assessment, and we actually just did that here the other night. And yeah. And so that's the process.
Thank you. Mrs. Riggs?
The question is, how do we evaluate our administration?
Yeah, and I think probably the addition in that, and I apologize, is how should our USD 480 administration be evaluated, and who should do that?
Okay. Number one, that is the superintendent's job to evaluate the administration, and the board's job is to evaluate the superintendent. That is the, that's the role. And how, in terms of just following like what Nick said, you know, two times a year, that superintendent, they have, just to follow the policy, the plan that they have, how many times. But once again, the administration is evaluated by the superintendent, and the board evaluates the superintendent.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Definitely the superintendent is like what Nick said. We do it twice a year, his first year, twice a year, the second year, one a year from there on. We also are supposed to be having a board self-evaluation of just ourselves too, which we have done and have not done at different times. But that's important that we do it. But I think then the superintendent, for anyone else that's under him, or anyone that he designates, like if it's his assistant superintendents or doing principals, that's up to him. He has to make the decisions who he's going to have do what evaluations, and then how he's going to handle them.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez?
Yes, I think the superintendent has his staff that he will go and evaluate under him. And just like all the rest have said, the board will then evaluate the superintendent, and the memorandum or the policy that they have is set up for the superintendent. So in all in all, for the administration, I think that the superintendent will do those evaluations under what's under him.
Ms. Thompson?
I think they've all given you the process for each of those, but how we do that is, the board sets goals and a strategic vision, and then we look at those with our superintendent and see, are you meeting those? How are you meeting those? Are you, is there ways you could improve in those areas to better meet those needs or those goals? So that's what, that's how we evaluate. They gave you the process, but that's, those are what the things we're looking at when we're evaluating him.
Thank you. Mr. Tanking?
Can you repeat the question, please?
How should administration be evaluated, and whom should do that evaluation?
Obviously, it's going to be the superintendent's job, but you know, me being on the outside looking in, never been a part of this, I wouldn't have known the protocol or the procedures that they do. So that's all new to me. But obviously, I know that now that the role of a board member's got three or four roles, and that's about it. But obviously, like I said, it's going to be the superintendent's job, and it's our job to help advise him and support him. And possibly, there might be, you know, maybe look into an advisory board into that, and that would help get the community, the parents involved in more into our activities for the kids.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to add? Thank you. Mrs. Riggs, the next question starts with you. Do you feel the school board spends too much money on curriculums?
I will have to look at the curriculum budget, but I know the last purchase that we made that it was very big, it was the math department. The math department adapted some new textbooks. Okay? What the board, what the superintendent did was, they gave the autonomy to all the math teachers to review that curriculum and be sure that it was aligned with all the other schools. And then according to the recommendation, as a team, the teachers come up with, and then the department head then makes the recommendations to the curriculum council. And then from there, it goes to the superintendent. And I believe the superintendent, when I was part of the curriculum council, the superintendent was part of that as well. And then it goes to the board. So do I feel that they need to cut? I think they just need to decide whatever the teachers recommend. If they think they need more textbooks, we need to provide the money for that.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I guess my answer is, I don't think we could ever spend too much on curriculum. I think the biggest thing is, we have to make it effective, and we have to have results from the curriculum that we spend the money on. And if we don't, we've spent too much money. But otherwise, I think as long as we're using it and making kids learn more, the test score is going up, the amount of money we have to spend is not anywhere close to what it's worth for the kids.
Mr. Martinez?
So I haven't seen the budget of the curriculum, but if it's for the students, and we're getting the curriculum that the students need, I believe we got to get the teachers what they need to, so that our kids and other kids can get that education that they're looking for. Have we spent in curriculum in different areas? I know we spent in, for the middle schools a few years ago, I know in 23, we spent some. And there was a big scuffle about that of why we had that curriculum. But if we can get our students to where they need to be and get them...
Train break. My kids do brain breaks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For those of you watching, if you wonder why we're waiting, it's a train delay. There's a train that's pretty loud in here right now. So as soon as the train passes, you'll see the answers start coming back.
I believe this train's going to stop on Main Street.
Good time for John's station identification.
Every day.
Thank you for your patience. Mr. Martinez, the question was, do you feel the board spends too much money on curriculum?
Yeah, so just to backtrack where I was at, no, I believe that if we can get our students the education that they're needing, and the right curriculum, and what the teachers are looking for, and what we can get our state's testing scores up, and if it's helping our students achieve what we want them to achieve, I believe that we give them those resources.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson?
Since I've been on the board, we have spent a lot on curriculum. I think a lot of that is due to, when they had the redesign years ago, a lot of the elementary schools chose their own curriculum. Now we're to the place where we want everybody on the same curriculum. We have a really transient community. So if we have a kid move from this school to this school, we want that to be as seamless as possible for them. We don't want them to come in and be way behind because they were in a different school in the same town. That's, that's, that's not good for our students. So getting them aligned across the district is one reason we've purchased more curriculum. Like she talked about, the science at the high school, oh, math, sorry, math at the high school, they needed, they needed books, they needed new, they needed a curriculum to follow, and they were able to have that time to look together, research it, and pick the one that they felt worked the best.
Thank you. Mr. Tanking?
Obviously, my first answer would be say there'd be no limits. But in the real world, we'd have to have a decent budget on it, and I wouldn't be opposed to having it a bigger budget, but definitely would have to do a lot of research. Everything that we do, we'd have to be a lot of research, and just make sure that it's accountable and feasible.
Thank you. Mr. Hatcher?
Only if the results are not getting the desired outcomes. I believe somebody said it, that it could be a very expensive curriculum, and if we're not getting the results, then it's expensive. If we are getting great results, then it was worth every penny we put into it. I think we have to measure it so that we can quantify it, but it all depends on the results.
Thank you. Ms. Riggs?
I totally believe that this is the time where department heads need to be trusted. And from there, they need to go to the curriculum council. That's why curriculum council is designed, so they evaluate the curriculum before its purchase. But also now, we are in a point where we have to have what you call blend learning. And what that means is, that you have to have curriculum that will serve students that learn better with the computer. In other words, the textbook is, it's uploaded into the computer. That way, if they're absent, they're able to still do the assignment that is required. And I have, for 40 years, I have never seen a curriculum that was wasted money. Because every time it's reviewed by the curriculum council, it is reviewed according to the standards and the outcomes that are dictated by the state.
Thank you. Any rebuttal? As a board member, do you feel you should have a presence in classrooms throughout the district to observe?
I believe there's times we should, especially if we're invited to it. I don't think board members should just show up and end up in a classroom. I don't agree with that. But I do believe that we have made it available at different times for us to go, especially when there's a new curriculum, or there's a new style of class, at the high school especially. But at middle schools and grade schools, they've actually called and invited us to different things so that we could actually participate in some of the things they do. There's a couple grade schools, elementary, that have been really active in getting some of the board members there, and I give them kudos to do that. But just to show up, I don't think so. But yes, I do think that it's nice when we can do that.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez?
Yes. As a board member, do you feel you should have a presence in classrooms throughout the district to observe? So there's, there's a thing about a presence, and then there's a thing about being invited as a board member to just look. I believe that there has to be some communication with your superintendent so that you are able to go into these classrooms and follow the rules and regulations that these schools have in place. I believe that there's a time and a place when you can go into a school or into a classroom. But I do believe that, working with your superintendent, knowing that you're going or he's going with you, to get your full view of what's going on in the classroom, if that's a curriculum, if that's just looking over new teachers, I believe that your superintendent should be in that with you, letting you be able to go into those.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson?
As a board member, I would never, never walk into a school or a classroom without being invited. I think that anytime somebody walks into a classroom, it's a disruption, whether it's meant to be or not. Heads turn, focus is lost. I have been in classrooms because I've been invited. Just last week was at Meadowlark, helping with fifth grade job interviews. And I love being invited to those things. I've been to an event at Eisenhower in a classroom where we, they had a project that they had to sell to us. I've been to things at the high school, and I've been through classrooms at the high school because of the schedule, where they wanted us to go through and see some of the different classrooms and how it worked, so.
Thank you. Mr. Tanking?
I believe that that could be a double edged sword on that deal. If you're invited, that's one thing, and I think that it should be as a group, plus the superintendent with you. Me, as a parent, I like to be involved in my kid's life. And as any other board member that has a kid in that school, they would love to be a part of that kid's life and in the school. But like she said, it's a distraction, and the most important thing that a lot of us wouldn't think of is, if they keep seeing our presence in the school, and that's why I say it's a double edged sword, is if they keep seeing our presence in the school, if they have a complaint, they're going to go to who first? They're going to go to us because they see us there. When that complaint needs to go to the superintendent or the principal, the chain of command. So unless we're invited, I think as a group, then we should go, but I think it would be disruptive.
Thank you. Mr. Hatcher?
No, I don't think it's a problem at all, but there is a chain of command in which to go to a classroom. First off, I'd have to go ask my superintendent or tell him, say, hey, I'd like to go observe in a classroom. And he'll probably going to ask me why. Next thing he'll probably do, I have to go to the school, got to go and check in, go through the security door, talk to the principal possibly. Like to see a classroom, observe it. They'll take me to wherever they need, wherever they would like for me to go. I don't think it's, I don't think it's an issue. Teachers are observed every, I don't know, daily, but certainly, there's observations and things going on all the time. I don't think, I don't think it's a problem, or I don't think it would be an issue.
Thank you. Mrs. Riggs?
Number one, I think we need to follow the chain of command. And if we are invited by the principal, we need to be sure that the central office, our superintendent, knows that we are going to per review or the high school. I think they need to be informed, just in case somebody asks a question, and they know why we were there at a certain building, because we were invited in what capacity, I mean, why we were there for. But not just to show up. No, I disagree with that.
Okay. Anybody like to add? Okay, that concludes our questions for the evening. We will start with the two minutes of closing. And we will start with you, Mr. Martinez?
So I want to thank everybody for coming out. Thanks to the chamber for allowing us to come and share why we think we are one of the candidates that should be picked. I want to thank everybody that came out tonight. I want to thank City. I want to thank just everybody that came out, everybody that's on Facebook Live. And you know, in 23, when I started, when I started this journey, I didn't know if I'd run... run again. Lost by a few, I think it was '24 I lost by, but I knew that there was something left out there. I knew that I could make a difference in some way or somehow, and so '24, I thought about it, and I knew the election was coming up, so I told my wife, and she says, no. She said, no. But I put my name anyways, and she's backed me. You know, I'm here to make a difference, I'm here to change the way others look at students. I know there's a lot of migrant students out there that I want to help. I've been approached by parents of those migrant students as well on how to better educate their children. I've been approached, is my child safe? And I know that's a big topic out there of if my child's safe, if my migrant child's safe, and I want to tell you that we will make it safe. There's policies in place, I've talked to the superintendent, there is a policy in place for it. There's, might not say a specific word, but we will make sure that your child is safe and you are safe when you're in our facilities. But I do want to say thank you, and vote for me on November 4th.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson.
Yes, I want to thank Rozelle and Chamber again for having us all here, and thank the community for showing up. I invite you to come to the school board meetings as well. Like I said earlier, I didn't think I was going to run again. Just like when I have ever taken a job or applied for a job, I don't want a job just to have a job. I want to have a job where I feel like I'm making a difference. I don't want a job for a paycheck. I want to know I'm making a difference. And I feel like I have been able to do that on the school board. I feel like I have been able to advocate for all students and for our educators and our staff. I think that, I think that God sent me proof of that when He had those high school kids call me and ask me to reconsider running. So I am ready for another four years and will continue to fight the good fight and work to do everything I can to provide, ensure that liberal is providing the best educational opportunities as possible for our students, and I would appreciate your vote for Sarah Thompson on November 4th.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Mr. Tanking.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for everybody that showed up tonight and was engaging in this important steps in the future of these kids. I'd also like to thank the Chamber and all the media for hosting this and making it available for everybody that couldn't make it. Also, I'd like to thank all these candidates and your commitment to the kids and your community, and good luck. In moving forward, I know that we all want to share a vision for the children's success, and I just, if I'm elected for the board, I want to work and continue to help the students and know that we're there for them. Also, I want to help out with, I know that the teachers work tirelessly for our kids, and I want to help encourage that. I want to help whatever I can to be a part of that, on the sidelines, of course. So I appreciate you having us here tonight, and I'd be honored to have your vote to help serve this community in this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hatcher.
Like I said earlier, I've lived in this community my entire life. I love this community. I love serving, I love helping. I feel like that I have a lot to contribute, I feel like I've contributed a lot, but I think there's a lot more to go. One of the things that I feel very passionate about is having consistency at the top. And we've been up and down in the district here for several years in the past. I feel like now we've got somebody that can lead us in the direction we need to go, and I feel very passionate about that. Without consistency, you can't have good leadership, and when you have good leadership, your whole district changes. And I think that's evident with what's gone on in the last several months. I mean, it's phenomenal, the changes that are taking place. So again, I love this community, I want to advocate for our kids. I've been a lifelong member, and please, vote for Nick Hatcher in November.
Thank you. Mrs. Riggs.
USD 480 has one of the hardest staff that have persevered throughout many changes. As a board member, I believe we have the responsibility to our students, our staff, and our community more than we did 40 years ago. Although technology, strategies, and systems have been advanced, students still need to learn, understand discipline, be accountable for their learning. Therefore, students not only need to complete graduation requirements, but also demonstrate genuine academic achievement throughout the consistency and the proper implementation of curriculum and interventionists. As a board member, my leadership experience can be used to collaborate and set goals and monitor systems that promote better outcomes. It vote for me is a vote for experience in education, and I'm the lady with the red signs. I will appreciate your vote November 4th.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
I also would like to thank the Chamber and everyone that showed up and everyone that's listening to it on the radio for taking the time and being interested enough to learn about the candidates, and hope you have learned something tonight. I truly feel privileged to be part of the board, and I'd like to continue to be part of the board. I will never give up my passion for education. I don't think there's anything more this whole community or any of us as parents, grandparents, could be any more important than an education for our kids, and we need a good education. I think we need to make sure we do the very best we can by bringing in the staff, by having the administration and having the policies to make our school the best it can be, because there is nothing more important than those kids getting a good education. And I would appreciate your vote also. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your willingness to serve our school district and participating in this forum. We wish you all the best. This concludes the Liberal Chamber's Candidate Forum. We would like to thank KSCB 1270, The Leader in Times, La Mexicana Radio for sponsoring this event. We also would like to thank those who tuned in and attended in person to watch. We encourage everyone to get out and vote. Early voting begins Monday, October 20th, and the general election is on November 4th. Thank you all very much, and have a good evening.
So that's a wrap on the USD 480 School Board Candidates. What's your immediate thoughts?
Thank you.
Interesting questions and answers. I think there's some, you know, anybody that watched that should have got a pretty good idea of what was going on.
Yeah, and hopefully we get a chance to visit with them. If you want to come around, we'll see if we can visit with you real quick. We're gonna get everybody in here one at a time. We'll start with Alan Brown, and give him a chance to give his immediate thoughts and reaction to how things went for him tonight.
There you go.
So obviously not your first rodeo, you've done this a time or two, but now that it's in the books, how do you measure it up tonight? Oh, it's always good to get it over with. I never will get used to doing one, because you just want to tell a lot more of the story that we're able to tell here, and again, I'm just privileged to be part of USD 480, and I have not given up one little bit of care or one bit of energy for being a school board member. And again, I'm just, just an honor to be on it, and I'd love to stay on it for another four years. So of the questions you got tonight, what stood out to you? Oh, probably the percentage of the teacher vote. I thought that was an interesting question. The pool is obviously gonna be an interesting thing that we're all gonna have to work at in the community. The curriculum question, I think that was important, and I was glad to see that everybody was willing to spend whatever it took to have good curriculum for the teachers to be able to teach. And you know, I saw a comment from a lady on here that was talking about, you guys used to meet in the choir room at the high school. I forgot about that, but they had cameras or something already in there back then when it was on cable. Yeah, we did. It actually worked out real well, and we discussed that, but they were doing a lot of late practices and things for the musicals, and they thought we would interfere with that, and if that's the case, we don't want to interfere with the students. But I was on the board when we had them there, and with the risers, it made it great for the public to be able to see what was going on and to hear everything. I still think it could be an option, but we'd have to make arrangements with the vocal music and the drama teachers, because at that time, they didn't feel like they wanted us to be interfering with their classes. I'd love to see you get a home for the board. You know, every other board has a home, you know, the county has a chamber, the city has a chamber. I'd love to see that, because it could be used for other things. It wouldn't just have to be a board. If there were other meetings in the district, whatever, you could have something take place. So it's gonna be interesting to see if you guys get that taken care of. Well, give you the last word. Did you feel like you got everything in? If there's anything left, this is your chance to put anything out there you'd like the people to know. I just still have a passion for the kids and the education. I'm proud of what kind of students that have come from here. Everywhere you go, kids from liberal have been really successful, whether it's going to Seward County, whether it's going to a four-year school, or whether it's going to a job. I just feel, I hear over and over how good they feel about what they got from liberal, and they are ahead, even though sometimes our test scores don't show that. I think we give them that energy and the good feeling about themselves to be able to move on and be really good at what they do. Well, we appreciate you being a participant tonight and seeking reelection, talking with Alan Brown. Good luck the rest of the way. Thank you. We'll see if we get some of the other candidates here. We know that these guys are gonna want to get home. We're pushing nine o'clock here. We're gonna give them a chance to get out of here and get home. We'll see if we can get another candidate, we can pull somebody over here, trying to see who we can get. Maybe we can get Nick. Nick's not too far away, see if we can bring him over. He's also an incumbent. I can't remember, do we have three positions, or how many positions that we have to fill? Is it three or four that we're voting on? Is it four? I know it's three at the college, I don't know what it is at the--
I think it's four.
I think it's four. Oh, here, we got Travis. Come on in, Travis. We'll get Travis in here. Travis Martinez, I think, making his second run here for the school board. So this is the second time you had a chance to do this. How do you feel it went tonight?
Yeah, so I thought it real well, you know, it was my second chance, and I'm hoping to come out as a win. I missed it by barely a few votes last time, and hopefully I made a difference and got my answers the way that the community wanted to hear them.
So what question you think stood out to you tonight?
Oh, man, you know, it's, I work on both sides of it, and I really think it's this pool question. The pool question's been going around, it's been on Facebook. You know, we're working on stuff on the city side of it, and it's just an all-around, what are we gonna do for a pool, and where do we go from here?
And you know, that was a good question. Maybe tonight, people are learning for the first time, it takes it, that the district negotiated a two-thirds vote--
Yeah.
--that the teachers have to agree by two-thirds to change the schedule at the high school.
Yeah, so the two-thirds vote. I've been following the school board meetings, I've been going on their docs, and I've seen the negotiations and the two-thirds vote on it. I don't, I don't believe that it, I'm a fan of it, and I think that we should relinquish what needs to be relinquished back to the superintendent and the school board so that they can make a better outcome at the end of the day.
Well, this is your last chance of this forum to tell the public. Is there anything you didn't get out there? Here's your last word. What do you want the public to know?
Yeah, you know, I'm here for the students, I'm here for your families. You know, I've done the '23, now I'm back in '25, and I'm looking to make a statement, I'm looking to make a difference for the children and for the families that don't have that voice out there, and hopefully I can do that. And if you do have any questions, you can find me on Facebook, or you can find me down at the rec where all the kids hang out. So I'm always there, I'm always around town, so just come and find me and vote for me on November 4th.
And you do some officiating?
I do.
You do some JV games?
I do. Yep, I'll be there. Once I start in November, so I'll be there officiating JV High School Games and freshman games and going through there. Daughter's a senior this year, so I'm getting out more, and we're going to those games, and so you'll see me out quite a bit more often.
Well, congratulations for putting your name out there, and good luck.
I appreciate you, sir. Thank you.
And we'll see if we can get some other candidates in here, we'll see. I think we've got Sarah Thompson coming up here next, and we'll get her over here and see how she feels, how her night went. Just wrapping up here, we'd like to give them each an opportunity to share with you how they feel like they did while it's still fresh in their mind. So you know, Sarah's no stranger to the show. Usually, she's representing Seward County Community College, but tonight, candidate for school board for reelection. So Sarah, how do you feel like it went tonight?
Good question. You know, you just, you just answer the best you can, you answer honestly, and hope that the community agrees and believes in what you have to say.
And so what question, any specific question stand out to you tonight?
Oh, gosh, I knew that there would be a question about the high school schedule. I figured the pool would come up, because it came up in the college. There were some really good questions that I wasn't expecting, so I don't know, I thought they were all good questions, so.
I think a lot of people learned tonight, the two-thirds negotiated--
Yes.
--agreement with the teachers at the high school, that they would have to vote two-thirds to change what they're doing, and that you guys have voted that through. So I mean, you approved that, is that the way it worked?
We approved that they have to have two--
Yeah, because that was part of the negotiating--
Yes, so, well, the negotiated agreement, I don't know how, I can't remember how far back that was added into the negotiated agreement, it was prior to me.
Oh.
But this year, it did get changed to where it's not just the certified teachers in the classroom, that are included in that vote. It's all certified teachers in the building.
So I'll give you the last word here. What do you want the voters to know, last thing about Sarah Thompson?
You know, I am passionate about education. I will continue to try and advocate as much as possible, not just for our students, but for our educators. I think that I've done a good job on the negotiations team to ensure that we get them the best salary that we can, that we get them, you know, as much as we can of the things that they want and need, and that will help them educate our kids.
Well, we appreciate you for putting your name out there. You've served four years, looking for another four, so good luck to you.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
And we appreciate you stopping by.
Sure.
Election's coming up in November. We'll let some other candidates pop in here, so we give everyone a fair chance. Looks like we got Louz coming on next, and so we'll get her sound kicked on. Make sure you click it twice. Let's get you one more, there you go. And so Louz Riggs, a longtime educator in the USD 480, 40 years, and now seeking a seat on the school board. So Louz, how do you feel it went tonight?
I think it went very well. I just wish I had a little bit more time, a couple of questions, because I mean, I just wanted to elaborate a little bit more, but I understand, we would have been here until midnight if we would have had a little bit more time. But no, I feel good about my answers. I enjoy the opportunity, and also, you know, people, the community that are interested in knowing what's going on in our community with the college, and not just USD 480, but also the college.
So what question tonight you feel like stood out to you?
Oh, I think the swimming pool. The swimming pool, I think is gonna be a big issue. It could be an issue, but to me, anytime you have an issue, it's gonna be a challenge, but that's also gonna be an opportunity for me as a board member, hopefully, that I will learn to do my research before my answer, my vote is given.
So I'm gonna give you the last word. Anything you didn't get to say tonight or-- So I'm going to give you the last word, anything you didn't get to say tonight, or anything you want the voters to know before they head to the polls?
Well, number one thing, just to remember that I am, I, I want to give back to my community, that's the reason I, I'm running again, and just to remember, my platform is listen, learn, and serve with transparency, and I just want to give, collaborate with the board and give them a teacher perspective than, than we haven't had for a little bit. So I just want to have the opportunity to give the teacher perspective of what it's like to be in the classroom, because in 40 years, if I haven't seen it, felt it, then that many years, then we're missing something here.
You've, you've been around, for sure, and every level, too.
And I have seen many things, good things, though, not, not all of them have been bad, but at some times, like I said earlier, we, we are good, but we cannot settle to just being good, we need to be great.
Sure.
For our kids, for our students.
So we appreciate you putting your name out there on the ballot, good luck the rest of the, the race.
Well, thank you, Earl, I appreciate that.
And we'll, we'll keep up with you, and we'll follow through. So thank you for stopping by.
Thank you, Earl.
We got two more candidates we're going to get to you tonight, we've got Nick Hatcher coming up, and then I think Terry Tanking after that. So, we'll get them over here, and let them give you their perspective on the night, and then we'll let you get, get out of here and, and call it a night. Come on in, Nick. See, I like how you have to sit further away from the camera so I don't look as short. It's, it's forced perspective. See, we look almost even, isn't that nice? So, let me make sure you got kicked on right, all the way over.
Oh, sorry.
So, Nick, not your first time through here, you've done this for a little bit, but how do you feel it went tonight?
Oh, I think it went very well. A lot of good answers, a lot of good questions, it was good, good night.
And so what question stood out to you?
Well, the one that, that I'm most closely associated with, because I'm on the IBB negotiating team, was the two-thirds vote.
Yeah.
That, that is probably the one that probably stood out to me.
And I think a lot of people were just learning that tonight, they probably weren't aware of that, that that was negotiated in years ago, that you can't change the schedule at the high school without a two-thirds vote. Do you see that as something that would make it through another negotiating round, or is that going to be a chip on the table?
Well, certainly it'll be talked about. But, you know, what it boils down to, Earl, is that you've got to have, you've got to have a collaboration between teachers, administration, board members, community members, everybody that's involved in that, that, in that process, needs to have a say in it. And, and that's what, that's what we're proposing, that's what we'd like to have. We, we've got a policy that we've written, we haven't adopted it yet, but we've got a policy that, that lays that out, the procedure in which how we need to go change the schedule if we had to, without the two-thirds vote.
All stakeholders at the table.
All stakeholders.
And so I'll give you the last word tonight, anything that maybe you didn't get a chance to share, or what do you want the voters to know about Nick Hatcher before Election Day?
That I am as passionate today as I was when I ran 16 years ago. I love being a redskin, I love my community, and I love serving.
And you've done it all in 16 years, and we'll see if the voters say, let's give him another four.
Well, I hope they do.
Well, we're going to find out. Good luck, Nick, thank for coming over.
You bet.
And, you know, Nick in November, you know, I was thinking, you know, we always suspect Saint Nick in December, but loses, you know, board, Nick in November.
I kind of like that, Nick in November.
It's free, you don't have to pay for that at all, that's a freebie. Thanks for stopping by, Nick.
Thank you.
Now, we got one more, we've got Terry Tanking coming up, and that'll wrap up the night, and give you a little feedback from each of the different candidates here tonight. So we'll get Terry over here, and let him visit with you, and then we'll pack this up and, and get you out of here, got bumped here, just let me get that back over. So we get Terry in there, there we go. Well, Terry, I think this is your first time running, so how do you feel like it went tonight?
You know, I had a little nerves going in, but once you start setting with people of your own community, it was easy. I mean, not completely easy, but it was not as, but there's nothing to sweat over.
So what question stood out to you tonight?
I knew that the, the, the schedule was going to come up, there's a lot of yeses and noes about it, don't like, I like, we just got to do some adjustments to them, if we're going to make it work.
What do you feel was your strength tonight? What do you think you really stood out on?
I think my biggest push and my biggest strength was, is trying to get the parents more involved, the kids accountability, the parents, it's got to start with the kids and the parents, the accountability, getting to school on time. That's really what I kind of want to push for, because it's all about the kids in the very beginning and in the end.
Sure. And, you know, one thing I didn't hear tonight, you know, discipline, there, you know, there's been a difference in that over the years, so I won't hit anybody up on that because it didn't come up. But your last word tonight to the voters, what do you want the voters to know about Terry Tanking before they head to the polls in November?
Well, I think the biggest thing that I want them to know is that, you know, I'm all about this community. I mean, I've been the face of Southwest Miracles for the last four years, constantly, you know, we help with the BJ's, we help with the Saints, boost, you know, hosting kids.
Youth coach.
Yeah, been a coach for kids, and that's the biggest thing, is these kids are grown up, and they come up and they give you hugs, hey, Coach, what's up? And I don't recognize them without their helmet with the, you know, the tape with their name on the forehead. You know, and that's the thing, you coached, and these kids, they mean a lot to you. So, I've been here all my life, it's, it's, this is my community, it's our community.
Well, wait till you're in and your wife's having a baby, and the, and the person pulling blood stops and says, you don't remember me, do you? And I say, no, and they say, you coached me in Little League. I said, I did! And they're like, how old am I?
Yeah.
But, no, it's, it's great, and your, your volunteerism is appreciated.
Thank you.
And good luck to you in November.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for stopping by.
I appreciate it, thank you.
And that'll wrap it up for us tonight here at the Chamber, the two forums tonight, the SCCC Board of Trustees Forum and the USD 480 School Board Forum. Jim and I will be joining you in the morning, and we'll let you know how it all went from our perspective. It looks like my camera's about to go off. So from the Chamber office, this is the leader in times, saying, when you live in liberal, there's no place like home. See you in the morning.